Good afternoon, everyone. The Sacramento City Council will please come to order with the clerk call the rule. Please to establish quorum.
Thank you. Vice Mayor Ashby.
Here.
Councilmember Laloey.
Here.
Councilmember Harris.
Here.
Councilmember Valenzuela.
Here.
Councilmember Chenier.
Here.
Mayor Pro Tem Gera.
Here.
Councilmember Jennings.
I'm here, Madam Clerk.
Councilmember Vang.
Here.
And Mayor Steinberg.
I am here. Good afternoon, everyone. Let us begin tonight with the land acknowledgement and the pledge of allegiance. I would like to ask Mayor Pro Tem Geta if he would please lead us in both.
Folks could rise for the land acknowledgement. To the original people of this land, the Nisanon people, the Southern Maydoo, the Valley and Plains Meowak, the Butwin and Winton people, and the people of the Wilton Rancheria, Sacramento is only federally recognized tribe. May we acknowledge and honor the native people who came before us and still walk beside us today on these ancestral lands by choosing to gather together today in the act of practice of acknowledgement and appreciation for Sacramento's indigenous people, their history, contributions, and lives. And salute, pledge, I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good. Thank you very much, Mayor Pro Tem. Let us begin with two special presentations. First of all, recognizing the Asian American Pacific Islander History Month, Councilmember Vang.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you so much for this opportunity. Hello, colleagues. Hello, everyone. Happy Tuesday. Today is May 31st, and it is the last day of AAPI History Month. And this month commemorates the history, traditions, resiliency, legacy, and cultures of Asians, Asian Americans, Native Hawaiians, and Pacific Islanders across the United States. I am just so honored, proud to present a resolution today that really centers and uplifts our incredibly diverse community. But in particular, for this resolution, recognizing all of our Asian American, Native Hawaiian, and Pacific Islander staff in the city of Sacramento. As you all know, Sacramento is home to over 520,000 residents, of which Asian American Pacific Islander actually makes up 20%. And that includes over 6,000 small AAPI businesses. Today, two of our very own fierce AAPI women leaders, I would say, in our city will be accepting this resolution on behalf of the entire API Employees Resource Group. That's Candace Naguchi and Sally Lee, who you both see on the virtual screen. Candace and Sally, I have so many amazing things to say about these two fierce API women. They came together during the pandemic to really relaunch an employee-led AAPI group in the city of Sacramento to make sure that, one, our city truly had a supportive space to support our API employees, that there was room for networking opportunities, fostering really personal and professional growth. But most importantly, really holding space and opportunity to have conversations on issues that impact our Asian American and Pacific Islander employees, especially during the current surge of anti-Asian hate crimes that we've seen during the pandemic. They have actually been holding monthly webinars and programming with our employees every third Thursday, and they welcome everyone in the city of Sacramento, just not folks who identify as AAPI. Last Thursday, I was really excited, and many of my colleagues here supported the AAPI Culture Celebration Luncheon that happened at William Land Park last week, and it was really great to be back in space with our employees and to see them in person, not just on Zoom. And then lastly, I also just want to take this moment to also just give a shout out to also all of our amazing API city staff in the city of Sacramento, but also our API staff that works on the fifth floor. You know, in particular, I want to give a shout out to Asia Lee, who I know has worked tirelessly over the past few months. Last year, this council passed a resolution condemning anti-Asian hate and xenophobia. But we just didn't end it there by just doing a resolution. We held three convenings in partnership with Councilmember Chenier's office, and want to give a shout out to Allison, who helped lead some of those convenings, and Councilmember Jennings' office, and Councilmember Gera's office, and Coy, who helped spearheaded some of these regional convenings. And what I want to share with you is that, you know, even through these API convenings, we started an Ork House Stop the Hate Collaborative. This coalition came together, and we applied, Mayor, for state funding, and we drew in $1.9 million for API CBOs in this region. And so I'm just really proud of all of our city staff. Nothing gets done in this city without our staff. And so I'm just so proud and honored to center them today and really just want to celebrate our people, our history, our culture, everything that we've gone through, but really center our employees. I don't have the resolution in front of me. I believe that Sally and Candace might have received it already. And with that, I love to just give the floor to both Candace and Sally, just to say a few words.
Please.
Thank you. I'm Candace Naguchi, Support Services Manager in the Community Development Department. Thank you, Councilmember Vang, Mayor Steinberg, and members of the council for this recognition. I really appreciate the acknowledgement of the history of Asian Americans and Pacific Islanders, remembering the hardship and struggles, as well as the accomplishments and contributions of the API community. I'm really honored to receive this resolution on behalf of the city of Sacramento's Asian and Pacific Islander Employee Resource Group. We just established this Employee Resource Group a year ago, and now we have this wonderful group of city employees who are very involved. I'd just like to thank each and every one of them who have been actively planning and promoting API activities and events. I'm very proud of the accomplishments that they've made so far, and I look forward to the future activities and accomplishments as well. I'd also like to thank my colleague Sally Lee, who worked with me to form this resource group and created the space for all these employees. Thank you.
Very good. Thank you, Candace. Sally?
Sally, would you like to say something? Oh, I don't know if she can hear us. I think she's on mute.
You may be on mute, even though your mute sign isn't on, but. Okay. We can't hear you. It's okay.
No, no worries, Sally.
By Councilmember Vang and Candace spoke eloquently. I sure enjoyed the get-together last week, too. Your right to be in space with the community was just fantastic, and to celebrate our great diversity and the contribution of our API city employees was really, really important. Thank you.
Thanks, Mayor. And I don't know if my colleagues have any other comments.
I see Eric Garrett, Rick Jennings have comments. Go right ahead.
Oh, thank you, Mr. Mayor. One, thank you, Councilmember Vang, for this resolution, and thank you to Candace and Sally for all your great work and the great, you know, effort to organize our API staff here in the city. And, you know, I feel honored to have had the opportunity in years past to present the resolution, as well as a council member who's proud to represent a little Saigon, a very diverse community that also has many Vietnamese, Mongolian, Indo-Chinese folks. And I couldn't, I couldn't say, take this point to not thank my Chief of Staff, Coy Satorn, who is, our understanding, the first Chief of Staff in a, in a local political office in the country. So I wanted to thank the great work of a lot of our staff out there as well. And, and today also to thank our economic development team, who held a great in-language and cultural session in Vietnamese on how to apply for some of our economic development dollars and part of the 916 card, all the great work to support our local businesses. And then finally, I want to remind folks that Filipino Fiesta is also happening this weekend, and so that we participate and join. We have a rich history here, since we're an ag, ag history here with many of our Filipino farmworkers who were the first to fight for farmworker rights. So thank you for that, Councilmember Vang, and thank you to all our API staff here in our city. We're going to continue our efforts to make sure that we have a vibrant city.
Thank you, Councilmember. Councilmember Jennings?
Thank you, Mayor. To all of the AAPI staff that was, that was out at the event the other day, and those who were not out, I just want to thank you for your incredible work that you're doing for the city of Sacramento and for a wonderful event with some of the best food that I've had in a long time. So, yeah, I hope you don't talk bad about me, because I did go back and get doubles, get twice, you know, so. I hope that was okay, but it was, it was that good, and I had to take some home for later that night and also for my wife, so. But it was just a wonderful event, really enjoyed it, and looking forward to attending it again. Candace and Sally, I want to thank you for your leadership in organizing this group and the incredible work that you've done. It takes a lot to lead a group of people, and especially when you're starting something that has never happened before. And you've done an incredible job of leading this group, and I just want to acknowledge you in front of your peers and this entire council. And then finally, I just want to say to Councilmember May Vang, my Vang, you have just been incredible in helping to lead this group and direct this group and make sure that they accomplish the great things that they, we know that they've been doing for years, but maybe never getting credit for. I just want to thank you for your incredible leadership. You know, leading from the front and all your heart and hustle that you put into everything that you do. But I just want to acknowledge you in front of all of us for the incredible work that you've done in starting this group up and making it happen, and the difference that it will make for generations to come. And so I just want to personally thank you.
Thanks, Councilmember Jennings, but I give all the credit to Candace and Sally. They just tell me what to do. That's heart and hustle. You let the people lead. So, thank you so much.
Very good. What a great way to start our meeting. Thank you, everybody. Count likes Mayor Ashby. I'm sorry, I didn't see you there. Go ahead.
That's okay. Thanks, Mayor. I just want to join the chorus. I'm sorry I couldn't be there at this amazing luncheon. I was honored to help support it, but unfortunately, my schedule wouldn't let me get there. But obviously, Rick ate my meal for me, so that's good. Thank you, Councilmember Jennings. I appreciate that, my participation in the event. You know, last week, when, when we brought this up, and some of our colleagues said to you, Councilmember Vang, "Do the resolution next week. We don't want to wait a whole year." I thought, oh, man, just what she needs more work to do, put together a resolution in a week. But I should never have doubted you. Here you are with a, with a resolution and people to accept it and receive it. And I'm just sort of sitting back listening, thinking, I'm very proud of our API staff, but also the city of Sacramento wouldn't even be what it is today without the API community. Those are literally the hands that built this city. And how lucky are we to live in such a diverse city where we get to celebrate cultures and spend time really thinking about it, really thinking about what it means to integrate all those cultures into what we do as a city, in our schools, in our communities. And there is no better living embodiment of that than you, Councilmember Vang. And while I know you shy away from it, and you hate it when we all point it out, if I recall, you are the first API woman on this council, are you not? Yeah? So that's a big deal. And it's great that you give credit where credit is due, but folks feel represented and seen. They see themselves in you. And I'm really glad that you're here. I think we all are, and that is why you heard Councilmember Harris and Councilmember Jenny pushing you last week, and Councilmember Laloey pushing you to bring this forward, because they know how important that is for people to, to see you as that mirror for themselves for the future. And I'm just really proud of you, Councilmember Vang. Good job. And thank you to our entire API staff and community for always, always coming in clutch for the city of Sacramento.
All right. Thank you. It's a great way to start the meeting. Let's move to the second presentation, which is a little bit more sober. But important as well, turn it over to Mayor Pro Tem Geta.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And, and not so much a distant translation here. I mean, we, we are here today with Moms Demand Action to recognize the National Gun Violence Awareness Day. And even in our efforts, I think you mentioned earlier, Councilmember Vang talked about the efforts to stop API hate, and some of that involving gun violence. And the, the first Friday of June is National Gun Violence Awareness Day. We had been working with Moms Demand Action, and today with us from Moms Demand Action, from our local Be Smart leads here are Suzanne Landers, Carol Kinsner, and Carol Rogers to talk today. And this date, you know, was chosen for June 3rd, sadly, because of a 15-year-old Hyde Pendleton, who was shot on her way home from school. She would have been 25 today, still at a very young age, and just a tragic loss. And so first, I want to thank the Clerk's Office for moving this resolution forward faster. I know that this was difficult to put on the agenda, but the fact that we could do it today is, is important, given the most recent tragedies we've had in our country and locally. And, you know, whether it was at the grocery store shooting, whether it was here in our own city. But when I looked at those photos of those kids last week, I mean, I saw my nephews, I saw my kid. When I looked at those kids, it was really just emotional. And, and this is something that, you know, while this is just a resolution, we have to do everything we can to address immediately the effects of gun violence, and everyone doing their part, including our city, can achieve that. I want to pass this over here to Suzanne Landers and also Carol and Carol to, to talk about the importance of this. And to, and to thank our state to remind folks about this issue, we'll be lighting up the Convention Center orange. When people ask why orange, they're gonna, it will be to have that conversation about gun violence and, and what we need to do to end this, this, this cancer in our society. So Suzanne, let me pass it over to you, and I want to thank Moms Demand Action for coming here today to, to make this an important conversation point.
Thank you very much, Mayor Pro Tem Gera. We're very appreciative of all the work that you have done with us over the last few years. On behalf of Moms Demand Action, I would like to thank Mayor Pro Tem Gera, Mayor Steinberg, and the Sacramento City Council for proclaiming the first Friday in June as National Gun Violence Awareness Day. Your acknowledgement of this day is more important than ever. In the wake of multiple tragedies, including the recent shooting that stole the lives of 19 students and two educators in Uvalde, Texas, the fight to end gun violence has never been more urgent. Enough is enough. We join together and wear orange to demand a future free from gun violence once and for all. We should not have to live in fear that gunfire can ring out at any moment, whether it's at an elementary school in Uvalde, Texas, while grocery shopping at a supermarket in Buffalo, New York, attending a party in San Bernardino, or attending graduations across the country. We deserve more. Every day, more than 110 Americans are killed with guns, and more than 200 are shot and wounded. We wear orange to call for an end to gun violence in all of its forms, including domestic violence, suicide, and city gun violence. This year, we once again unite in our call to end gun violence and hope that you will join us as we come together and wear orange on Friday, June 3rd. We honor the community shattered by gun violence alongside the more than 110 people who are shot and killed and hundreds more who are wounded every day in our country. Together, we call for meaningful action to save lives. Again, thank you so much for proclaiming this day, and we certainly hope to see all of you wearing orange on Friday. And just as a quick note, if you aren't aware of this, I know that Mayor Pro Tem is, the, there's going to be a press conference on the Capitol steps on Thursday. The timing is probably around 10:00, 10:30-ish. That might move a little later than that, but right now, that's what they're saying, and we'd love to have all of you come out and join us at that event as well. Thank you. And if Carol, either Carol would like to say something?
Carol?
I'll just add my thank yous to Mayor Pro Tem, Mayor Gera, and to all of the staff and city council members for, for getting the proclamation through. Thank you for lighting up the convention center in orange. I really appreciate it. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. There's so much to say on this topic. It's, a day is really important and not nearly enough. I think I'm going to hold back. I've said a lot over these last couple of weeks, but I just praise you for your, for not giving up. And may you, us, or the, and/or the next generation change this sickness in our country, because that's what it is. Glorify violence, allow the sale of these multi-fire weapons that have no purpose other than the killer maim. I'm so sick of it, like everybody else is. I'm so sick of the culture in our country where some politicians think that this is okay. It's not, never will be. So, thank you for reminding us and for not giving up.
Mr. Mayor, I think, yeah, thank you.
Vice Mayor.
Thanks, Mayor. We, we talked about this as a council last week a bit, too. Councilmember Chenier made some great comments, and you know, we talked about how we were all in agreement, and we may disagree on some things. This isn't one of them. You know, this is something where we're so united, and I want to thank Mayor Pro Tem Gera for bringing it forward. I'm a member of Moms Demand Action, and I sort of see them as a little beacon of hope. Every time something horrific happens and you just feel like there's nowhere to turn and there's nothing we can do, the Moms Demand Action are still there fighting. And one of the best images over the last week has been those moms just standing up in all of those spaces and filling those gaps and fighting for something better. You know, background checks shouldn't be controversial at all. It's, it's easy. It should be so easy. And there are these loopholes, and we need to champion closing them. I'll be wearing orange with you, Mayor Pro Tem, on Friday, and I will try to make the press conference on Thursday aware of it. And I will be doing so for Amber Clark, you know, my librarian that we lost, her husband Kelly Clark, who has become an absolute champion for every town and some of the other groups that are fighting so hard for change, so that we can, you know, as the mayor said, stop this sickness. And I'm really proud to be a member of the organization and look forward to more work to come on how we can all really lead from the front on this issue, see, see better days ahead. I, I know, like so many people, it was hard to do school drop-off last week, very hard to drive through car loop and let my little girl out of the car. And it's hard when we drive by the Memorial Auditorium, and I was privileged enough to be at one of the graduations this year. But when I graduated, we didn't have metal detectors out in front of the graduations, and now we do. And I just saw them out there in front of the Memorial Auditorium, and it was stark. We shouldn't have to live like this. So, to better days ahead, thank you, Moms Demand, for everything that you do.
Thank you, Mayor. And thank you, Madam Clerk, for moving this forward. And I also want to thank all of our facilities teams for making this happen. And, you know, it's unfortunate that we had been planning this already and that another incident occurred. I hope that all of us who can make it can participate in the, the press event, but more importantly, to talk about this and talk about how this is a, we can't just bring it up when an incident happens. We have to bring this up to, to make a change now. So, thank you to the, all the members of Moms Demand Action locally and for being able to put this together today. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Mayor Pro Tem, for bringing this forward, your leadership. And Vice Mayor, thank you all. Okay. Now we move to the consent calendar. Members, are there items that, that anyone wants to talk about and/or pick up separately? As she, Councilmember Laloey?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Yes, I'd like to remove item number 12 and bring it back in, in a few weeks. There's, there's engagement between the developers and the community, and I want to let that continue. So if we could remove item number 12.
Well, I think you can remove it, but I think it still needs to be considered if you're pressing it continues, because it's, and we'll hear from Danielle Foster on the item. But as I understand it, there may be a deadline here, so I just think we want to discuss that before we consider whether to continue it or, or to potentially consider it tonight. If that's all right. So we'll remove that and take that up separately. Are there any other items?
Yeah, there are comments on both 13 and 14. Don't need to pull them for a separate vote.
Okay, just wanted to make my notes here. Go ahead, Vice Mayor.
On our, on the log, there is an item, city manager, requested by the mayor and myself relative to fire staffing. And both folks assigned to seeing that through are no longer with the city, so I'd like to see that assigned to the city manager, and then perhaps a, a report back to the mayor and myself does need to be on the council agenda for where we are with that.
Okay. I think that was going to be part of the budget deliberations here over the next several weeks, right, Mr. City Manager?
That's correct. I think we have the issue resolved, and we'll report back as part of the budget presentation to the full council.
I know you're really close, and I just want to make sure we get that dealt with, and I want to make sure it has appropriate leadership tracking it, because neither of the folks assigned are, are with us here.
Yeah.
Okay. Jeff, did you have another one, Harris?
Yeah, Mayor, I misspoke. It's items 13 and 15, if you wanted to move the balance of.
13 and 15. Okay, very good. Hold on.
There we go.
Okay, very good. Let's see, do, 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 do. Is there anybody else? I don't see anybody. I do want to speak about item 17 briefly, but not remove it from the consent calendar. Okay, so let's do this. Let's hear then from Councilmember Harris on items 13 and 15.
Okay, thank you. First, I, I just want to say about item 13, which is the Alchemist Public Market proposed for the River District. This is an exceptional project that will be a real benefit to the River District. I want to congratulate Sam Greenley on his tremendous advocacy and push to get this money, and thank Assemblymember McCarty for allocating the $450,000 to, to aid with the site acquisition. So this is a great project that's going to move forward. I really look forward to the groundbreaking on this, and that's all good stuff. On item 15, which is the temporary groundwater substitution transfer, water transfer, I just want to say, I know some people question these groundwater transfers, but this is a real win-win. There are water jurisdictions that are deeply in need of water in other areas of the state, and we have a little extra this year. So we transfer it, but we are also remunerated to a pretty significant degree for that groundwater. So we're helping other jurisdictions, and with the money we receive, we can bolster our groundwater pumping apparatus and make ourselves more resilient in dry years. So it's really a win-win. And I just want to thank our Department of Utilities for being very mindful of our water supply and coming up with a, a good program to help others and help ourselves at the same time. Thank you.
Thank you. And item 17, I just want to say how excited I am about this proposal. I'm going to thank Danielle Foster for her perseverance. This, we were approached, I was approached and Danielle was approached by Lennar, construction major, national builder, Veve, an Israeli manufacturer, manufactured housing, and combined with Step Up, one of the best homeless housing providers in the country. And for a, a small amount of money, I think it's $2.5 million tonight, we are going to be able to get 125 units of quality manufactured housing for low and very low-income people and working on the site. Not going to reveal that tonight, but it's going to be 125 units for a mere cost of a couple million dollars to the city. And this is really worthy use of our Housing Trust Fund dollars, and I'm really, really happy about it. Want to say thank you to Danielle, and thank you to the private sector, Lennar and Veve specifically, for seeing Sacramento as a place to, to want to pilot this very important idea.
Mayor, can I add something real quickly to that?
Okay.
Yeah, just want to.
So I think what we will do, how, how much public testimony do we have? And it's most of it on item 12, Matt. How how much public testimony do we have in this? Most of it on item twelve, Madam Madam Clerk?
I have six hands raised to make public comment on the consent calendar.
Can't hear you?
Mayor, I think Councilmember Schneer had a comment on seventeen as well.
Yeah, if I could, Mayor, just really quickly, just to follow up.
We can't hear you, Madam Clerk.
I don't think he can hear us.
We got thirteen participants. I would bet that most were on item.
I don't think the mayor can hear us.
So um. Why don't we why don't we hear item twelve now? We'll vote on it separately. Your issue here with item twelve?
Yeah, let's meet.
You can for a second and then let me see if I can just get.
Our sound, our sound has gone down here or something. I don't know.
So, Mr. Mayor, can you hear me?
Can't hear anybody.
Yeah.
Can you hear me?
We're going to be back in uh Chambers, by the way, uh after the council recess in July and another. Reason why it's long past time.
Doug, will you check audio?
We have assistance problem here. Can you hear me?
Yes.
You can hear me. I can't hear anybody else. Can you hear each other?
Okay, they can't hear.
Oh, so it's me. Ah ha, I'm the problem.
So Vice Mayor, Vice Mayor, can you hear me?
Yeah, I can hear you.
Hello?
So, Mr. Mayor, we can.
Now I can, now I can. All right.
All right, Mayor. Councilmember Schneer needs to speak and then and then back, okay?
Uh I was just gonna follow up, Mayor, really quickly to also say thank you to Danielle also. It it's a great project. Uh it is it is great bang for the buck for us. Thank Lennar and also. Uh we had a member of the community who came forward and actually made the match between us and the property owner. Uh I won't mention his name because that might give away where it is, but I want to thank him as well. Otherwise, we wouldn't be here. So excited about the project.
Very good. Okay, now where I left off before my technical difficulties. I was going to turn it over to Councilmember Laloie. To restate the concern about item twelve because I think we'll hear that now and then we may separate the votes if that's all right. Um but take all the public testimony at one time. Go ahead.
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor. Um you know, this this particular location, it's the old um Armory Site. The the project, obviously, i- it's a great project. The location is very concerning uh simply because where it's located. And how the infrastructure is just not there to support the current residents. And also um um how that side of the district. Um as far as air quality, traffic, uh lack of um uh foundations. Um we just need to talk to the developer a little more, a little bit more. In fact, as we're talking. The the community is meeting with the developers tonight at six thirty if I'm not mistaken. So the developer can answer some of these concerns. So I would like to ask to remove this. And bringing it back in uh in two weeks um to be um considered again.
All right, I want to hear from Danielle Foster because I I I know um well. I want to ask about whether or not what a two-week continuance would mean. Obviously. In most every instance, reasonable for any council member to. You know, want more time to work it out with the community, but there may be some actual deadlines here. And so I just. Want to have that conversation so that the council knows what its choices are. Danielle?
Thanks, Mayor. Danielle Foster, Housing Policy Manager for the city. Um the the resolution before you is just to support Bridges. Application to the state for matching funds for local. Resources provided to the project, including thirty-one project-based vouchers and our zero-dollar impact fee. And it's due by next week. So given our meeting timeline, we don't, we don't have another timeline. For meeting in between, but the the developer Bridge is meeting with the community and will continue to. Shape the design of the project. Um it is on state surplus property, so the overall. Um density of the project and number of units is really in the state's jurisdiction and they've approved the project, but. The the developer definitely wants to work with the community on the overall um design and landscaping and integration with the community. And also some of the funding sources they're looking at, looks at infrastructure as well. Um but the project has passed CEQA under the state review also.
So June, is there a specific date? What happens? So what happens if we don't take this vote by June seventh, which is a week from?
It's five point seven three million dollars that they're going for in the local grant matching funds. So this would help leverage state resources and the goal of the project is really to to leverage all the state funding so that there are no local. Funding needs on the project.
And the issues about cutting down trees and parking and design would still be open. For consideration by the city council? Do we have a say on any of those issues?
Uh it's really state jurisdiction, although I can clarify that no trees will be cut down. And um then the number of spaces, it's seventy-three spaces for a hundred and twenty-four units, which actually exceeds what our requirements would be. Because it's right on the light rail stop. So we actually have no parking requirements for development on light rail under city code. But again, this is under state jurisdiction since they're the property owner.
Okay, um councilmember Laloie, you want to ask some questions of uh?
Sure. So if if we do not, if if the developer misses this deadline of June seventh. They can technically come back and uh apply for funding again. So it's not, it doesn't close those doors, does it?
The next round is, I think, a year from now um for the local. Match grant funds because it's focused on the state surplus properties and so they time it around the award of those sites.
But they can still continue um. To be able to file for state and federal credits. And then come back next year to do the local because regardless, their financing is going to take anywhere between eighteen to twenty-four months anyways. From state and uh federal.
There's a number of sources they are pursuing at the state level and um as well as federal tax credits, but they are trying to. Pursue all of those as quickly as possible to get the project under construction. So I mean, do delaying this application delays construction of the project potentially.
Well, ultimately, and and. The fact of a matter of that this is a state property and. And it's their jurisdiction, I understand that, but at the same time. As elected officials, our job is to make sure we represent our districts and our city. Right now, this project has a lot of concerns and a lot of questions, valid questions. And um you know, I I think delaying this to get those questions answered. Uh is the least we can do um for the residents of North Sacramento. So. Again, I'm asking this to be removed and and come back because this is a project that there's a lot of questions that are attached to it. Uh so uh that's what I like to ask, Mr. Mayor, for the item number twelve to be removed.
So, okay, I I I think what we should do now is hear from the public.
And then I do have my hand up.
I I understand. I was going to call it. I just.
No, that's fine. Go to the public.
Yeah, I think let's go to the public testimony, then I'll turn it over to councilmembers to weigh in on this uh. Issue. Councilmember Laloie essentially asking for a continuance, so that would be a motion. If there were a motion to move the item, that would be uh of, you know, a potential motion as well. So. I I'm just concerned about the five point, I'm concerned about six million dollars and losing that money.
Well, Mr. Mayor, you're not losing it. It's the developer that potentially is losing. It's not us. Uh so I I just want to make sure that we're talking, I want to make sure I understand that we're here to talk on behalf of. The constituents and not the developer.
For sure, but wait, I'm not saying the project would lose five point seven million dollars, the project. And if if and you you are uh you have some questions and maybe some doubts about the project itself. But it's the project that's an issue and that's weighing the benefits of the project, the community's concerns and all of it and trying to. Make a right decision, but without five point seven million dollars, the project is less likely to get built. I I think the developer may be on the. Uh one of the members of the public testifies, maybe we can ask that that question, okay?
And Mayor, do you want to dispense with the consent calendar? Take a second to do that.
I just don't, I, the reason I would, I didn't is because there may be public testimony on other items that I just.
Sorry, okay.
Yes, I just don't know whether I can distinguish item twelve from the others in terms of the public testimony. So let let's hear from the public.
Thank you, Mayor. I have a thirteen hands raised. The first is Stuart Gal.
Hi, City Council. Uh thanks for letting me speak. Uh I'm a resident of North Sacramento. And um I'm calling to support my councilmember uh asking that uh this vote be delayed. Um. Sean's been great. He's been working with the community and listening to our concerns. He's been listening to Bridge Housing also. Um it's really unfortunate, the clash um of these meetings because Bridge Housing is hosting a community meeting. It starts at six thirty. Uh so most of the community can't attend this city vote and. This is a state project. It's a a an out-of-town developer. So we really need you guys to represent us on this and 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 have your eyes on this project. And to hear public testimony uh uh on this project. It is, it's a controversial project, but. Not uh for reasons you might expect. Um Woodlake has been broadly supportive of. Uh uh of affordable housing. It's actually the scale of it. Uh uh it's a massive, it's a five-story building. Uh that could hold maybe five hundred people um on one acre and it it's really jammed in there and and. Really, most of us don't see how that's going to feasibly uh function. But uh we're really, most people are also really conflicted because we want new developments, we want affordable housing. So it really sucks to uh uh to be stuck in this situation, this clash. And it's so unfortunate the developer scheduled this meeting for the same time that this item was coming up. Uh. I I mean, I kind of think it's kind of their fault. Uh the people have a right to uh to speak and we really need your eyes on this development. We need, we need your help, uh please, uh because it's complicated and the issues it's bringing up uh uh are really complicated. So. I hope I hope you'll be with us along the way to make it a better development uh for everyone, the new tenants also. Uh who live there.
Thank you for your comments. Next speaker is Elaine.
Yes, hi. My name is Elaine Jackson and you know, there's a number of issues with this project. One of them, as Stuart said, is a five-story building. The other is, this neighborhood was built in the nineteen twenties. It was built. Uh with very narrow streets. Only uh not all sidewalks on each street. There's a lack of them, no crosswalks at all. And there are, the streets are narrow. That means that children will be walking in the middle of the street, sharing it with vehicles. And bikes. That is horrific for anywhere if you're, if you have a child. And if you look at this neighborhood on the way to school, you'll be walking in the middle of the street. That's one issue. The other issue is the schools in this area are actually very underperforming schools. You're putting low-income people into an area that has a low-performing schools, a lack of healthcare. A lack of employment opportunities and an area that has below-average income for the city of Sacramento. You have three of them now projected here. Why aren't they building these in areas like Land Park, Tahoe Park, Curtis Park, Land Park? Because the people there will fight you. Well, this is sad to see this and I hope that all of you vote no on this. Not only that, nine five eight one five uh district has the lowest rents in Sacramento County. The lowest. Why would you be putting low-income housing in an area like this? They are much more needed in other areas. I don't understand that. It makes zero sense to me that you would even consider this. Let alone the children walking to school and adults walking in the streets and you can't fix it. You can't put. Si- side uh sidewalks and crosswalks in a lot of this area. Please consider your vote and consider the neighbors and the people. Here and at least come and look at it. You need to drive around the whole neighborhood. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Our next speaker is Dean Dalben.
Thank you. My name is Dean Dalben. I live in District Eight. I urge you to oppose this item. It does not help the city or the people of Sacramento. It takes steps backwards. In addressing the many housing and homeless issues we face. It continues the same old fake solutions, efforts that have failed and will continue to fail. There's no such thing as free money. Someone pays and in this case, you benefit. I have asked how much has been spent in Sacramento from government funds, taxes, fees, et cetera. And what have we got for it in the last decade? How much has been spent? No one here could act, provide that answer. I've asked the same, in the same period, how many have achieved housing successes and independence as a route of result of those efforts? No one here knows. I've asked how how many provided this housing, had jobs and were able to support themselves and their families. As a result of these efforts. Again, no one could answer that question. How many were able to move on from homelessness and low low-income housing? And find a better life during the last decade due to these efforts? No one here could answer that question. I've asked these questions at various times. To staff and elected representatives, never get an answer. The B reports uh yesterday the cost. Uh eighty-two million dollars for a hundred and twenty-four apartments, one to three bedrooms. Average cost is over six hundred and sixty thousand dollars. That ha includes twenty-five percent of this housing for the homeless. The city waived almost a quarter, a half million dollars in fees that would otherwise be collected. But we got this that proposal that's not going to do anything. Redfin reports a median price of. Uh seventy-seven, seven hundred and seventy-seven homes sold in Sacramento in April. The average cost, five hundred and eighteen thousand dollars. If you reuse that eighty-two million dollars, we could have bought probably over a hundred fifty-eight homes. And given them to people with no monthly mortgages to pay. You have my complete statement. I urge you all to read it. I emailed it to you. And I seek responses to what I asked, these questions. I know there's other expenses related beyond a free mortgage. But I think we can do something to make a better thing and Mr.
Thank you for your comments. Your time is complete. Will you make your final comment, please?
Yes, if you, if state regulations prevent this type of transfer.
Thank you for your comments. Next speaker is Tommy Young.
Uh good evening. So I'm going to try to keep this to uh fifteen seconds uh and ask a non-rhetorical question. And that is um. Can a council member uh and the city. Advocate for something that would violate the housing element and Assembly Bill six eighty-six. To um affirmably further fair housing um because. Councilmember Laloie is predicating his decision on changes in density and other requirements. So I think this could go to Danielle Foster or anybody on the legal team. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Our next speaker is Tommy Setura. I believe it's Mike Setura.
Uh thank you. Uh my name is Mike Setura. I'm a resident who lives about five blocks maybe from the proposed site. I support this development. I think that given our current affordable housing crisis. Uh we need more and all of the above and frankly, while some of the points in opposition, you know. Are valid and worthy of discussion, I also can't help but notice an undercurrent that seems to me that they're trying to throw everything they can. From the perspective of not in my backyard. Uh the related point from, I guess, my closing statement. Is that I support this and I urge you to vote yes.
Thank you for your comments. Next speaker is Kristen Perry.
Hello, um yeah, it's Kristen Perry. I I live in Woodlake in North Sacramento. Um first of all, I do want to acknowledge the Asian and Pacific Islander Month and also the Latino Heritage Month. Um I grew up in a very diverse neighborhood and you know, here in Sacramento, um. My experience so far has been very disappointing on how we support our diverse communities. Um first of all. This should be tabled. Um Sean Maloney, thank you so much for the support. This project has so many problems. I work for the state and I do planning for the state. And the issues that have come up, and I'm supposed to be at a meeting in half an hour now after working an entire day. Um are so many issues that, you know, that are just so complex and. You know, the money that you're throwing at this, I mean, the mayor talks about five or six million dollars. This project is actually. This project is actually costing close to, I think, a hundred million dollars to build a hundred and twenty-four units in a park, in the middle of park between the Police Memorial and Woodlake Park. A hundred and twenty-four units, up to six hundred people. To put this, to put this in there at, at, at the way it is, we don't, you know, most people don't care if it's affordable housing, low income housing, no income housing. This is too much. That's, you know, condensing too many people, again, you know, in this area. You did this to us in railroad, you did this to us in Surestate. How many times are we going to be disappointed with your planning, with your decisions? You are decision makers. You are diverse. You stand up for diverse communities. This needs to be tabled. This needs to be discussed. Do not hand over millions of dollars to these developers where you could actually build nice homes for people who need it. Thanks.
Thank you for your comments. Next speaker is PJ.
Yes, hi. I wholly support item seventeen, the development at the old armory location at Arden and Oxford Streets. However, I do wish it were social housing rather than a developer. Social housing is the utmost important. To decouple profit motive from people's ability to their right to housing. People shouldn't have their very existence coupled with the ability for a developer to make profits. Our government should be focused on its citizens' ability to thrive and the recognition that such thriving makes for stronger and more robust communities. Social housing or projects have a negative connotation by design. This was primarily due to racism. What we saw at the time was upkeep of social housing dropped once white flight occurred. White flight happened when many service members took advantage of the GI Bill, which was denied to people of color. As a result, white folks had, who had been in social housing, which was kept up while they were there, left for the suburbs and we saw the government let those buildings fall into disrepair due to the influx of white men, or minority communities and the historic impact of defunding those communities because of structural racism that didn't see their families as important while fully funding primarily white suburbs and their access to resources. I would also like to see similar projects, preferably social housing, in more affluent areas since all areas are impacted by homelessness. And it isn't wholly contingent on areas with more marginalized communities to bear the entire load of ensuring unhoused folks everywhere get housing. We can't depend on developers to develop low income housing. They are capitalists. It is frequently unprofitable. They're not designed to be supportive of it, and we can't depend on them to do so. I hope the D two council member won't stand in the way in service of his white constituents. Also, every time you all push back on issues that aren't progressive, every time you lack an equity focus, every time you go against rent control, go against single payer healthcare, defund communities to hyperfund police, you enable the circumstances that resulted in more shootings. Keep up the good work.
Thank you for your comments. Our next speaker is Gordon Liu.
Hi, I'm a, I'm a resident of District Two and a homeowner. I support Sean in removing this item on the consent calendar. You know, we, we are already short amenities in that area and you're gonna move more people into an area that we have no parks and other amenities in that area. Um, in twenty eighteen, you guys made a no fee for the, the water sewer and the parks. I mean, we're already disadvantaged in that area and you're gonna add more people into that area. It's just the location is wrong. It just, we need to work on, if you guys always talk about the amenity or equity and being fair. I mean, how is it fair to put more people in our community when we don't have any of these other amenities? And the size of the building is huge and it's right in the middle of a park area. I mean, we're already lacking parks. North Sac doesn't even have a park. And Woodlake is a small community neighborhood park and it's right next to that Police Memorial. I mean, would you live there and be looking down at the Police Memorial and the park? I mean, we, we need more park space and the, those other things that we need, such as the uh, such as our um, our other items like the, well, I, I'm pretty much.
Housing.
Yeah, the housing. Well, the thing about it is too, is it, we need those, you know, the, the water and the sewer, those other things there. I mean, we, we need that, those kind of things to support that area. So old now that how do we add more housing and build more stuff on there without doing the basic needs? We need those basic things. I appreciate your time. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Our next speaker is Maria Elena.
Yes, good evening. I'm calling in regards to item number seventeen. And uh, what I'd like to say with regards to that is that while I think that it looks like a very attractive offer and a very immediate solution that is less Band-Aid like, I would ask the city, as I have asked the county in the past, to start looking into the regulations around mobile home parts and how they are already impacting people on fixed incomes and low incomes who desire to be homeowners. Now, when you're providing housing to the unhoused, that's great. But are they going to experience the same exploitation that we pay for on a monthly basis? And what are you guys going to do to ensure that they're seeing good productive services? Because we've heard about the other services that the city and county work with and how abusive those services can be and how inept the caseworkers are. Uh, also with regards to twelve, the community, as much as I don't like to agree with Woodlake, they're, they're not totally wrong with the lack of infrastructure uh, that they need. As far as parks go though, I mean, how many uh, golf courses are in the area of District Two? Maybe we could ask them golf courses versus states and build you a new parks, huh? Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. The next speaker is Deanna Garcia.
Hi, my name's Deanna Garcia. I was born and raised in North Sacramento, attended school there, own a business there on Marysville Boulevard. I am in support of this. Anything that we can do to get the unhoused people with a roof over their head, with some type of social services, with a toilet, with running water, I am in favor of. I'm sorry that a lot of people who spoke before me are not in favor of it, but we have to do something. We have to move this forward. We can't keep pushing, fixing our homeless problem down the road. We have to have the mayor and our city council members stand up and say, this is our first step. This is our first project and start building these things and start putting the homeless people in there. Start, look, we're in the valley. We're gonna be a hundred degrees before you know it every day of the week. They're gonna be sitting on the sidewalk, sitting in the parks frying like eggs. You know, we can't allow this to continue on happening with no mental health services. And they're falling deeper and deeper into a huge mental health state. And it's right there in the public for everybody to see. You know, that's unsafe. Let's talk about unsafeness. Having a bunch of people who are not in their right mind, who are off of their medication, who are suffering dramatically on the streets. They're already living in the park. Let's put a place there for them to be, for their animals, for them, for their, you know, health and safety, for the public's health and safety. Mayor, don't let them table this another two weeks. That's all I have to say.
Thank you for your comments. Our next speaker is Steve.
Good evening. I'm uh, phoning in to support item twelve. I support staff's recommendation to adopt the resolution documenting the local contributions that have already been made. There is no expenditure associated with this resolution. This project would create one hundred and twenty-four below market rate units, twenty-five, some of which are twenty-five percent of the area median income, which would probably around minimum wage or less. I didn't do the math. Sorry. Um, these are badly needed homes. I don't know what some of the earlier speakers are talking about with their build homes for people who need them. People need these homes. One hundred and twenty-four of them. This site is right next to light rail, shopping, recreation, and social opportunities. It's blocks from the elementary school. This is the right place for these homes. Again, there's no spending in this resolution. This, I don't know what that other guy was talking about. This is a resolution documenting the support the city already gave the project. Like the staff report says, the project is not subject to the city entitlement process. The only reason to oppose this resolution is to create ticky tack administrative obstruction to make the funding disappear and kill these homes. So please ease the way for this development. Don't subject it to administrative nonsense. Approve the resolution. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Next speaker is Andrea San Miguel.
Hi, good evening. Um, yes, hi, Andrea San Miguel. I'm a homeowner in District Five. And I just wanted to call in because I saw the Sac Bee article about this. And reflecting on the housing crisis that we're in, as somebody who just barely was able to get into the homeowners market, I'm in my mid thirties and if I had waited to buy a house or not had access to the credit at the time that I did, there's no way I would be one of the people trying to find an apartment right now in the city of Sacramento. With the way prices are, I think the city should absolutely do anything it can to leverage state dollars and make sure that people who, who work in downtown and would fall within the median price housing type of project have, are, you know, being near light rail. I think this is exactly the kind of thing that people of my age group, people who, who work downtown with me would, would, are, are, are in need of. And someone made the comment that if this were near Land Park or Curtis Park, people would be against it. So that might be true for some people, but if this were near, where there was a conversation about a housing project where rail is used to be near me, I'd be organizing for it. So I just, you know, I, I urge you to do whatever you can to not squander the opportunity to leverage state dollars and increase, um, not even just affordable housing, but median priced housing and other services near public transportation. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. And the final speaker on the consent calendar is Bernice Jimenez Krieger.
Good afternoon, council members. Bernice Jimenez Krieger. I am a resident of Woodlake. Uh, I would like to point out that I have myself and as well as my current family lived in Section Eight. So first off, this isn't low income housing, as the previous speaker has said. This is exclusively gonna be for Section Eight. The majority of the concern in the neighborhood, and I'm currently calling just steps for more of that armory project is, I have been parked here for the last forty-five minutes trying to have my voice heard. And within that period of time, there's currently four cars parked here on Oxford. And this street has turned into a one-way street because the capacity to park streets on the, on this particular thoroughfare, which connects to Arden as well as South Gate, and it's the only entry point into the parking lot, which would be the street that would be utilized for this project, again, has, has caused my car to almost be hit a couple of times. Uh, there was a person on a skateboard that almost got hit. Again, I, I have texted the pictures to some of the council members. But again, the issue here is the scale of this. Five stories, a hundred and seventy-six cars, which would be on premises. As anybody knows, including my own family that's on Section Eight housing, you always have cars. It is next to light rail. But again, the issue with our neighbors and the majority of us that are gonna be going to that meeting here in about thirty minutes is, it's the size of it. Five stories is just too large. We are asking the developers to scale back. We're hoping that that's the case. And again, pausing this onto the next year to get more funding is not missing out on the money. It's doing a prudent choice to be sure that this project is successful. Not only for the residents that are gonna be here, but also for this council member. People like Woodlake need to be supportive of projects and we are, just when they make sense and they take into account the size of a project and the neighborhood and the availability of the resources. So again, please consider tabling this until we have an opportunity to discuss this with the developers and come to an agreement. Thank you.
So, thank you, uh, members of the public. We have John McCall, who is the developer here to answer any questions. I want to ask one, though, procedural question of, again, Danielle Foster. If the council were to approve this item tonight, is this the last vote that the council would have the opportunity to take before the project either went forward or did not go forward?
There's one more conversation about the city's land neighboring the parcel, and that would be the last vote on the project related to the city council actions.
And that's, and it's important, it, it's an integral part of the overall project?
It would add a childcare center and twenty additional housing units to the project.
Okay, so there is another opportunity for the council to vote.
There is.
Okay, Mr. McCall?
Sure. Thank you for having me. Um, I, I thought I'd start by just answering the earlier question you asked, Mr. Mayor, which is, you know, are there gonna be more opportunities for the community to engage with this project? You know, after this vote, and the answer is absolutely. Tonight's community meeting is actually the third that we've held with community groups in the neighborhood and we, we plan to continue them for many months as we're quite early in the design process for this building and we care a lot about being good neighbors to Woodlake and, and folks on both sides of this building. Um, I do just want to say, you know, sort of like a couple of other commentators noted, what we're voting on tonight is not an approval or declining this project, but an opportunity for us to secure five point seven million dollars of state grant funds that would come into the project. And, and we believe actually would mean this project could go forward with construction over the next couple of years without needing to come back to the city of Sacramento for any additional funding, which is a huge benefit, we know, if we're able to deliver, you know, high quality transit oriented housing to a hundred and twenty-four families that need it in North Sacramento. We think, and I think the state of California agrees, and that's why they released the site for, for development, that converting it from its current use, which is a vacant armory building and an empty parking lot that surrounds it, into a really high quality housing development that's right next to a light rail stop that goes directly to downtown, steps away from a bus transfer station and a really beautiful neighborhood park is a great use of public lands. And, and we'd much prefer to see that happen and to see it happen, you know, using leverage state dollars as much as possible. I did want to clarify a couple other points really quickly that came up on the discussion. One, you know, the number of people in this development, we're looking at a hundred and twenty-four units and specifically large family units. So more than half are two and three bedroom units. We think based on what we usually see in our buildings across Northern California, including in Sacramento, that's probably gonna be around three hundred people. So I, I heard five hundred or six hundred mentioned earlier. We, we don't anticipate that number. The other thing that I just wanted to mention is, you know, we, we aren't really, you know, hoping to sort of drop a giant building here that the neighbors disapprove of. We're, we're actually gonna continue to sort of work with our architects and with Danielle and with Councilmember Laloie's office and Woodlake Neighbors Association to see what we can do to try to integrate with plans they have to improve crosswalks and school safety and a number of other things in the neighborhood. And we're actually looking at opportunities to secure some funding that's associated with our project for investments in some of those amenities nearby us as well. So we hope to keep working with neighbors and, and to, to gain your support here for this funding application to the state tonight and, and for future conversations. We'd love to, to join and have them with others.
Okay, thank you. All right, let's hear from my colleagues. Let's begin with Councilmember Harris, Vice Mayor Ashby, Councilmember Valen Thoyle, Mayor Proton Geta.
Thank you, Mayor.
Go, go.
Okay, Danielle, couple, couple of questions. The item here today is a resolution in support of the developer seeking state funds via grant process, correct?
That's correct.
It's basically a support letter, correct?
Correct.
Okay, that's one issue I wanted to clear up, uh, right out of the gate. So because this is state property, does the city council have any recourse in terms of designer density decisions? Or is that, is that up to the state? Or is it up to the developer and the developer, uh, what, what project the developer proposes?
It's up to the state. Now, John, did you want to add something to that?
Well, I, I would just say, Councilmember Harris, that it, it is up to the state, but, you know, Bridge in our proposal and in the, the plan that we're, we're moving forward with after being awarded the site from the state, designed the building to fit with the city's general plan requirements for this location. So.
Understood. But John, did, did the state specify a number of units that they would require for you to be able to submit a proposal?
You know, one of the competitive criteria that the state used in rating proposals for this site was maximizing affordability from this limited state resource. And so, you know, Bridge's proposal responded to that as best we could and we, we have to assume that may have been a, a part of why we were selected. But no, no minimum number aside from affordability being maximized on the site.
I guess what I'm getting at, John, here is, is, is density on this site still up for debate? And the reason I ask that is this. Look, I have been a big proponent for TOD in District Three. In my tenure, we have built a few buildings now with uh, several hundred units adjacent light rail. And uh, the benefits of this are great. However, this really is a site specific type of activity. And I can tell you that because it's a TOD and we really don't have parking minimums, parking can become a big issue. And Woodlake is very constricted. My, I would definitely have a concern about whether or not this was gonna. My, I would definitely have a concern about whether or not this was going to put parking burden on that area, which really can't sustain more parking issues. I would say this, you know, at sixty-fifth and Folsom, we've built buildings with substantial onsite parking, and yet the developers come to me afterwards and say, yeah, the parking wasn't enough, and now they want surface parking in another area. These are real issues that have to be dealt with. I I am, my querer is, is there any way we can interface with the state rather than have them dictate what the level of the project is, what the density and parking requirements are, so that we can get a good project? Look, there, there's no debate here. We need affordable housing. And I know that this council wants to jump at every opportunity, especially one that doesn't cost us any money to get affordable units built, but it still has to be done with some thought and foresight so that we don't cause great strain on adjacent neighborhoods. And I'm a little worried about this project that you're proposing, John, as possibly going down that path. So anything you can do to assuage my concerns would be important. You know, I would like you to be able to apply for this funding round. That makes sense to me. I just want to know that the neighbors and the council member and this council have a little bit of design input because, you know, although we have a dire need for affordable housing, it has to be workable.
Danielle, John, a reply?
Would you like to go, Danielle? I'm happy to jump in.
I was just going to say that in conversations with the state, they're definitely committed to the affordable units and the number that's here in the density. I think they're open to ongoing conversations about design. We have also initiated conversations with our Parking Enforcement Division and talking about how to manage parking overall around Woodlake. So those are pieces that we're working on. John, did you want to add anything to that?
Just that I I hear the the concern around parking, Councilmember Harris and Councilmember Loi has brought it up with us in two different meetings as well. And we're really looking into any and all opportunities we can, don't sort of make the the construction of our development infeasible. We we just recently added six additional onsite parking spaces just by sort of removing and reconfiguring the first floor. And we're actually looking at any and all opportunities we can to increase that ratio, because we we've heard loud and clear from a lot of Woodlake neighbors that it's a real concern. So it's not something we we want to dismiss, and we want to continue to work with the community to come up with a design that fits, even though, you know, technically, yes, the state does have this sort of final entitlement decision-making authority here.
So you as a developer, I'm almost done, Mayor. I don't want to monopolize the conversation, but look, this is a pretty important decision. John, do you feel that you have leverage with the state in terms of the number of units that you can propose in your project? Or do you feel that that's locked in and you just only have design considerations, maybe a little bit of leeway around parking? Those kinds of issues. I can really understand why the neighbors have a concern about this, because the city is not the last stop on design and functionality of what you're proposing. I I believe that Bridge Housing will build a good product, but I have also seen that density can cause problems. Even the TOD density, we're trying to encourage people not to use cars, but I can tell you almost everybody wants to have their car available to them, and it sounds like you're very underparked on this project.
Well, what I would say from Bridges' perspective is that, you know, this is the first round of these state surplus lands that are being made available for affordable housing, and we're excited to have been awarded any of them to work with the state on this one. But I can't speak from experience to the flexibility we have on the state side in terms of what they've entitled for this project. But I can say we we are genuinely, you know, concerned with the neighbors' interest in making sure there isn't a parking burden. Like Danielle said, we're we're looking at any and all options we can to look into that. There's the sort of design options, but there are also, you know, opportunities we're willing to investigate, whether it's installing parking stackers in the first floor, so we might double the number of parking we have there, sort of whatever is available to us that's feasible and within our entitlement.
Well, the last question, and and I'll quit, Mayor, is, look, if you can if you can kind of control this project, let let me put it to you this way. If you felt that the density and the issues brought up by the by the community were insurmountable, would you walk away from the project as as a good developer would, saying, you know what, this is going to cause too much stress and the state is laying too many requirements on us, and we can't build the right project for the site? Are you of that mind, John?
Gosh, it's a tough question. I, the the answer is that we we don't want to build something that we're not proud of. And we're long-term owners of our buildings and we operate them and stay there. We don't turn the key over and hand them over to another property manager. And so we don't want to be neighbors with folks that we've we've done wrong and 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 we're committed to doing right in any way we can, even if that means sort of expanding the bounds of what we've designed here, or or as it were, reducing them. I hope I've answered the question there.
Kind of, sort of, but not completely. Mayor, thanks for all that time.
Thank you. The other thing I would add is some of us have very good relationships with the state and with the with the Newsome administration. I always have conversations about parking and about design and about all the things that the neighbors would be concerned about, of course, be willing to do that. Vice Mayor Ashby?
Thanks, Mayor. Boy, this is a tough one. I really want to support my colleague, because that's what I like to do for each colleague, right? And make sure that communities feel heard. Obviously, this is pitting an important goal, which is adding housing, any housing, to our stock in the city of Sacramento. But I think, John, the problem is that the community doesn't feel heard, and now they feel jammed up. Because there's this deadline for next week for you to apply for the five million. And it's a real concern that a couple of people said, you know, including the council member, that we're not, you know, we're not really here for the developers. We're here for the community. That's important. But at the same time, we do need housing and we want to make sure that, you know, we can be helpful where where we can. So that being said, I know you applied for an RFP, but have you met with SH for vouchers? But have you met with SHRA on this project?
We have, and the state has already been awarded thirty-one vouchers from SHRA.
And I'm talking about you. Have Bridge Housing met with SHRA and talked about this project and and talked about the underwriting and the community concerns and and how to do it?
We've, we've met with their staff, sort of both in in the, you know, funding side and the the voucher side and talked about the project quite a few times, yeah.
Okay, is LaShel Dozier on this call, Mayor?
I don't, yes, she is. I see her right there. Right-hand corner, three down from the top.
Slightly different than my screen, Mayor. LaShel, are you there? Can you, can you talk to me?
Yes, what is your question?
Has, can you tell me a little bit about, did, did you all know this was on the agenda tonight? Have you met with Bridge? What's the status of your staff having met with Bridge on this project? You guys are so good at helping with these community issues. Where is that?
So this is a a project that Bridge did make an application to, a pre-application in a previous round, but was not funded. Because we just did not have enough funds, and then we asked them to reapply at our next funding cycle, which is July. So in terms of the project details, the parking, all of those things, those are things that we would work with any developer once we accept it for a full application, and there is a need for gap financing. Now, what I see here from just looking at this is that they're saying that they have enough, if they receive all of these funding sources, that they don't need any gap financing. John, is that correct?
That is, yeah.
Okay, so if they don't need any of the funding from SHRA, then we would not be in a position to do our normal kind of work with each developer and going through all of the details and the community outreach and looking at all of the issues of surrounding the project. But that's predicated on if they receive the funding. Is that correct, John?
That's right, yeah. So so the the LGMG application that the resolution would authorize today likely would would mean we don't need any SHRA funding for this project and and, you know, we'll, we'll have to see. There's many competitive applications between now and full financing, but that's our
And I guess my other question and understanding too would be if there's a hundred and twenty-five units, is that what you're saying? A hundred and twenty-five or a hundred and twenty-four, you make the application to the state, is there an opportunity for you to provide less units and still be eligible to receive those funding? Our experience is that once you pretty much give them the number, you're pretty locked into the that number or something more, but usually not considerably less.
So I think that's true for some of the other applications that will be submitted after the current one. The truth is that this this application we're submitting for LGMG funds is a brand-new source that's just been opened up this year for the first time. I don't think it's quite as stringent as some of the other state HCD funding sources you might be familiar with, but but it's, it's a new, it's a new conversation we haven't had yet.
New conversation, but still it's HCD in terms of what they require and our experience of working with them. I don't know if that answers your question, Councilmember Ashby.
It does, because without SHRA's involvement and with her expertise, I feel a little bit less comfortable. I feel like the community doesn't get heard, and then what I hear her saying is historically, while you may come back to us about childcare and an adjacent lot, once you lock in with the state on a number, they're going to hold you to that number, which means the community will have less room to discuss with you how you, how large this project is. And then, John, did I understand you right then that you won't, you won't be needing the vouchers from SHRA if you get this funding?
No, we still would, and we'd still be working with SHRA on that portion of the process.
So there'd still be a public subsidy from SHRA via the vouchers?
That's correct.
Does that allow us, LaShel or Mayor, an opportunity to have this? Is there a way to condition this vote that we do today upon when those vouchers, because they need to have a chance to go get their funding lined up, that this council could take a vote on whether or not to apply those vouchers?
That's already been approved, I think, right?
The vouchers are allocated through an RFP process, which Bridge did make an application for thirty-one vouchers to assist this particular project. That is conditioned upon them receiving all of the other funding that's outlined in their proposal. If they receive that funding, then those vouchers will move forward.
Well, that's my question is, is there a way to bring that back to this council to give this council an opportunity to sort of stand up for the community and have them have a chance to be heard? And is that, is that something we can do?
No, not with the vouchers. It's really with any type of gap.
Okay, but if they were to ask for the other gap funding, which it sounds like they're trying to avoid having to do, which in one way I appreciate, because then we can use the SHRA resources elsewhere. Well, I'm really torn, Mayor, because I don't think that a childcare center adjacent is a big enough hook for us to really be able to stand up for the community, and I'm worried that I didn't hear anybody from Woodlake say they didn't want the project. I just heard them say they thought maybe it was a little too big, and they're worried about parking and the road that's adjacent. I'd love to hear those those issues addressed before we wrote a letter as a group saying we support the project. It feels like we're leaving a community unheard. At the same time, I'd really like to vote for this project and move it forward. So I'm not, I'm not sure, Mayor.
Why don't we hear, why don't we hear from our other colleagues and get some, get some inspiration here, one way or the other. Councilmember Valenzuela?
Thank you, Mayor, and thank you for this discussion. You know, I heard a lot of reference to, you know, would this development happen in in other parts of town that weren't North Sacramento? And part of my district is, a big part of my district is downtown and midtown Sacramento. And this is a community of beautifully diverse housing, including a lot of very large, very dense affordable housing projects. And the thing with those projects is you wouldn't know they were affordable housing. I could probably name some off here on the call. And those of you who are familiar with downtown might be surprised to hear of an area that you drive by consistently over and over again. That is very large, very dense, affordable housing. And we've even hosted, I think, if not the first, one of the first state property conversions in my district by CADA over on O Street. I see Danielle nodding. I think we're the first. I'll just call it the first. And I got to say, I was at that groundbreaking with Belzon, because it's going to be a beautiful project. And the number one thing I hear from our community, and the, well, number one thing we'll hear later tonight when we talk about the community survey is that affordable housing, housing affordability is a huge priority. Part of the reason we're so focused on building more shelter space is because we don't have enough of these units. And not just very low-income affordable units, but family-sized affordable units. That's like not something we find in Sacramento. This is a gem. This is a real opportunity that we have in front of us. And I just have to say, these complexes are value-added. The people that will live in them will be value-added to District Two. And here in Midtown, honestly, we've really seen the best and worst practices reparking and the parking requirements. I have to say that we were, I like to say that we were the piloting ground for the no parking requirements, and we've really figured out what works. Residential parking zones nearby, having EV car share onsite, which also helps the nearby neighbors, because they can access those vehicles as well. There are best practices that we have developed as a city, and I think what John said is so important from Bridge Housing, is that he is developing this project based on our general plan guidelines. They aren't making this up. These are our standards. These are the standards that got us the pro-housing designation, the first pro-housing designation in the state that many of us were celebrating. That's going to help us get even more funding for more projects down the line. So these are intricately connected to the policies that we have as a city. And I'm very uncomfortable with us deviating from those standards for for this project when this is something that we worked up, as we know, because we're doing a general plan update right now. I mean, this is something we've talked about. We've talked about parking requirements for affordable housing. We've talked about infrastructure. We've talked about how we would compensate for projects that don't pay into these funds and these improvements. So I just really have to say that I think this is ideally placed on light rail as well. I think thinking about these families being able to jump on a train and go to work in most places of the city pretty, pretty easily is is really exciting to me. So I know this is probably getting ahead of us a little bit, but I'd actually like to move the item as presented for approval. This is estate property. All we're doing is documenting what we've already done to contribute to to the site being developed. And we, they're following our design guidelines. They're bringing us something that we don't have. These are families, most of whom are probably going to be coming from the street or coming from our shelters. This will open up space in our shelters. This will give them a place, a beautiful place in a beautiful community to live. And I just think it's, it's an incredible opportunity that I hate to see us lose out on. You know, at this time, given how much flexibility the develop does have, not with density necessarily, right? But with all of the mitigation measures we could talk about, with all of the additional discussion that could continue. So I'm moving the item, Mayor, and just thank you, Bridge. Thank you, Danielle. Thank you, SHRA, everybody who had a hand in this. I think this is an important, important opportunity for us, and frankly, I just, I'd hate to see us pass it by. Thank you.
Okay, there's a motion on item twelve. To move it forward is, we'll see if there's a second. Mayor Protem Geta?
Uh, thank you, Mr. Mayor, and I'll, I'll keep it short, since I think that community meeting is supposed to be starting at six thirty. Uh, and clearly, I think the developer has, uh, work to do with the community. I think some of those issues on traffic and and whatnot are are issues that can be resolved, while it's not in our purview. I do think our, maybe our city staff can help in in supporting those and helping addressing some of those issues. But I I do, I think the question here is, should we support an effort to, uh, to access dollars? I mean, and that's the real question here, and I I have a difficult time, you know, voting on when resources are so scarce, when we found very limited op options for for money. We've had this discussion about our housing trust fund, and where can we access that? And so, you know, for me, I, you know, while I I recognize the issues that are, that have been posed by the community, I do think that the question is in here, should we or should we not support an app, an effort to access those dollars? So I'll be supporting a, if the measure moves forward, to to be able to apply for those dollars, to be able to do those matching grants. There's no question that I think the developer has work to do with the community, and I hope that they are what they heard today and what this council has said is a directive to the developer to begin to work with the community on addressing these issues. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Are you seconding the motion?
Yes, I'll second the motion.
Okay. Council, Councilmember Schneer?
Thank you, Mayor. I'll, I'll also be brief. Kind of ditto to what Councilmembers Valenzuela and and Gera have said. I think they're right on this. And to be honest here, a- any affordable housing development we do, we're going to get folks who are not happy with it. And we need to change the mindset of what that is, and we need to work with affordable housing developers to make sure early on that they're working with the community, and I believe Bridge has been trying to do that. We have a desperate need for housing here. We're going to have, as I said, challenges anywhere we go. I I think we need to move forward with this, and I would second it if Eric had in. I think we we need to make this happen. We need the housing, and I would just We need the housing. And I would just, you know, wanna see if we can provide some additional direction for Bridge to. Continue what they're doing and working with the community and try to find solutions as best I can.
Yep, um, thank you. Uh, I have Vice Mayor, Councilmember Laloe, and Councilmember Harris. Again, I do wanna make a comment, maybe at the end as well. Uh, Sean, do you wanna go next?
Sure, um, you know, I. It's somewhat disappointing that as elected officials. We're willing to sell our communities and turn our back on re- on our residents. For the sake of so-called affordable housing. In my opening statement, I didn't consider this affordable housing. I said, where the location is, a project like this doesn't make sense on. There's, please clear your minds out. Um, I know Councilmember Valenzuela, you're big on. Um, having every development as affordable, and I can commend you on that. The location of this site cannot support such a big project. Uh, again, colleagues, disregard whether this project is affordable or market rate. The community and myself, we're concerned if this site can support such a massive project. So when I hear, and I have nothing against Bridge Housing. Uh, I commend you, your, your developers. You're there to make your money. And you'll do anything to be successful and profitable and make great project products. There's no question on that. But the fact remains that if we vote yes today, pretty much we are done. And the next voting that's gonna come to the council, it's merely Bridge Housing. Trying to acquire a building that's owned by the city on the same, right next to this uh, parcel. Uh, so a- a- again, it's the site, it's the location. To build something like that on this location, it will destroy an area of North Sacramento. Th- these are facts. The traffic is gonna be very, very heavy. So we're not looking into how we should design this. All those conversations are gonna be completely mute after this uh, vote that we place tonight. We do need affordable housing. In fact, we have some projects right now that are over about a hundred fifty units. That are going in our uh, community as affordable housing. As I'm speaking to you right now. As the mayor was, and it's, it's great supporting another developer with two and a half million dollars. So they can build hundred twenty-five units. These projects are coming to Sacramento where we can build affordability uh, places. But the question today is, will this project destroy a community? An answer to that is absolutely. So a vote yes is equivalent to, we like this developer. We want this project. And we know it's gonna destroy that community a hundred percent, but we just don't care. That's a yes vote. These streets are too narrow for this size of a project. These streets cannot take the, the, the ongoing traffic that this project is gonna bring into that community. That's what we have to decide on. We're not in social service business. We got elected to make our city great and to make sure our communities are protected. Without any um, side agenda or personal belief or ideologies. So once again, nobody is against this project because it's affordable, market rate, big, small. The concern is the effect of this project into that community. On top of that, this project is literally connected to the uh. To the memorial park for uh, Police Department and Sheriff. And again, this is a four or five-story building. So the, the, the space for this property, for this project is wrong. And whether it's a state mandated or what have you, I'm very sorry. Um. I'm working hard to protect my district. I'm not working hard trying to see what my next level or where do I wanna go next is. Right now, today, we all have to vote based on what's good for, for our community. And that's what I'm hoping my colleagues would understand that. This is not about an affordable housing. This is specifically about the space that this site sits on is not for such a big project. Um, and you know, John, I, I, you know, one of the questions that I have for you is that. Pretty much after today, this project is approved and you're gonna move forward. And there's no way, and I, and let's be frank, again, this is nothing against you or Bridge Housing. We're just discussing fact. There's no way you're gonna walk from this, walk away from this project, even if you know it's gonna destroy the neighborhood. Simply because it's a state project and Bridge Housing is doing a lot of projects for the state. And that would ruin your relationship with the state. It's a given. It's business one-on-one. Again, nothing against you as a developer. I, I, I'm a hundred percent supporting you. It, these are just facts that people need to know. You're applying for five point seven million dollars. And this is indication that. You're not gonna ask for any gap financing. You know, that's what I'm assuming. This project, you're not gonna even break ground for another two years. So we don't even know what, what's gonna really happen. But the fact is that a vote that we, a yes vote by my colleagues means this project is gonna go forward. It's not gonna slow down or stop or stop unless the community files a lawsuit. Um, against this development. That's the only way you're gonna stop. Is that correct, John? That's the only way that it would slow it down. Otherwise, a yes vote today means that you'll just move forward. Regardless of what the, in reality, regardless of what the, what the demand of the community is.
Yeah, okay.
No, no, I'm asking John. This is a question I have for John.
What, what is the question exactly?
The question is, if the community comes and proves to you that you can only, you can, if you build fifty units. It's gonna match the community. It's not gonna destroy the community. Will you make that change?
Councilmember Laloe, I, I guess I would clarify. I mean, a yes vote today from Bridge's perspective authorizes us to apply for this state funding source. You know, there are a lot of things that are gonna happen between now and breaking ground on construction, as you note. And, and we're gonna continue to work with community members to make sure that we're, we're meeting the needs of the neighborhood. Um, so this is not, you know, a sort of final approval by the city council to authorize the construction. I mean, it's a, it's a bit of a unique uh, entitlement situation, because this is state land, as Danielle sort of explained from the top. But we view this as a vote to allow us to apply for state funding, which ultimately means that the city can use its discretionary funds. Through SHRA for, for other deserving projects, which we think is a win-win for, for the hundred twenty-four families that are gonna live here and, and for the city. But, you know, we may disagree there.
And, and I appreciate uh, your concern uh, about the city's funding. But again, this is a project that will not probably break ground for another two to three years. So who knows what's gonna happen? Um, a- a- again, if, are you willing to reduce the number of the units? If you know that this big project will actually destroy that community. There's no ifs or buts about it. It will. So when my colleagues get, get, you know, they talk and it's, and it's very kind of uh, disappointing that. Well, we gotta build affordable housing. Yes, we, we have to, but at what point? So John, if, 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 if you, if you find out, if the data shows that your. Apartment, hundred twenty-four units will destroy that community, will you reduce those units to twenty-five units?
To what?
To twenty-five units or fifty units?
Councilmember Laloe, you know, I'm not sure exactly how to respond. The truth is that.
What's a yes or no question? If you know that it's gonna destroy the community, will you lower the number of the units?
I, I guess we're gonna have to sort of unpack the term destroy the community. We think this is gonna create a really vibrant and, you know. Fantastic contribution to the neighborhood. And, and that's, I'm not sure what data we, we could look to to sort of.
Where, where do you see the contribution to the neighborhood? I, I mean, th- those are big, big statements being made. How, how, how is hundred twenty-four in a, in a, in a community that was designed and built in nineteen twenties is gonna contribute to the neighborhood? That already, then the streets are so narrow that you can't even park on both sides of the street, because then it becomes a one-lane street. And that's, that's true during that entire community.
I, I think that probably this is a question that our partners at the state would have to really answer as the folks who sort of identified this site for affordable housing development. And selected Bridge's proposal. And, you know, we, we view our, our role as first responding to their requests for proposals. But also being, you know, good contributors to the neighborhood and the community around us. And that's why we've been doing what we have been with your office and with neighbors. Um, but. You know, at, at sort of why this site and, and why maximizing affordability, I think it's probably a question best directed to the state. Um, with respect, Councilmember Laloe.
And, and, and I appreciate um, your frankness. And this is why I'm asking. So my, my other question, John, is let's say you don't apply for this five million by next week. Then you have another opportunity to apply for it within a year from that, correct? At least that was my understanding when Daniel e- explained the, the pros- the, the process.
So this is a state funding source that at the moment has been appropriated for just one round. Um, we understand from the state housing community development department, they're making a second round next year, which is what Danielle was referring to. And we certainly hope that's the case, so they can accelerate housing production on state surplus lands. But there's no. Uh, no, no F O we expect at the moment, no, no ability to reapply. So. You know, th- that's sort of what we know at the moment. And so, one round thirty million dollar uh, NOF that's been released. And, and next year, they're, they're made, and we hope there'll be another.
Yeah, I, I appreciate that. Thank you so much. Uh, you know, Mr. Mayor, again, this is nothing against an affordable housing. So I wanna make sure my colleagues understand that. Because, you know, a few have, have made their comments that we need this. Well, you haven't even been there to see if this, this, this structure and its effect to the community. Um, so at this point, because there's these conversations uh, that are going on. I, I wanna ask all my colleagues to vote no on this. Five point seven million dollars is nothing. Compared to some of the money that we're spending to destroy an entire community. A community that's been there since, you know, forty, fifty, sixty years. And now we're literally destroying it. And if any of you are questioning, well, maybe not, please drive by there. Hundred twenty units means over four hundred cars. Seventy-five parking spots on the, on the property itself. That means, let's say, at least two hundred cars that need to be parked on the street. And I know my colleague, Councilmember Valenzuela, compared that site to downtown. But Councilmember, there's a big difference between commuting within downtown and a small community in the suburbs. That you, it's hard, it's not, you know, it's apple and orange. So again, um, I would, I would ask my uh, colleagues to vote no on this. So we can work on this project more. Um, we have other parcels that we're gonna, I like to bring to Bridge Housing in District Two. That I think they can probably build two hundred to two hundred fifty affordable uh, units. This is just exciting for um, Bridge Housing. And I, and I give them all right. Because they're making a direct connection with state. So that means that they're gonna be more favored. With future possibilities. Let's not sell our city and our community just simply for a hundred twenty-four units. Thank you.
So I, I'm gonna speak up now. I know that other members have spoken already, and I just wanna get in there and I'll turn it back over to Vice Mayor. Councilmember Harris. I, I wanna see if I can try to help Councilmember Laloe here as well. Because first of all, I appreciate and respect the fight for your city council district. That is your job. And I, and, you know, and generally, we give deference to council members on issues within their district. And so I respect that and I respect you. But a couple of things here. You make a large uh, assumption here, Councilmember Laloe, that this project will quote destroy the neighborhood. And I don't believe that. Now, I, I'm gonna tell you. I said I've got relationships with the state. We all do with the Newsom administration. This is state surplus property. They make the final decision in terms of entitlement and density. If I'm convinced in any way that this project will destroy the neighborhood, I will go to the state myself. I will. Uh, but I don't believe that. Um, a- and if it in fact, the, the number of units is, is too much for the site. Well, then I've heard the developers say, and the state would be open to uh, whatever. Uh, adjustments are needed to make sure that it's consistent and compatible with the neighborhood. But Jay Schneer is right. When we have a desperate need for more housing, and yes, affordable housing. And there is a reason um, to oppose any project anywhere, for any reason. That's part of the reason why we're in the mess we're in uh, today, because we have allowed local control. Uh, to, to dominate the debate. You know, we talked about a right to housing. There's no right to housing in California or in this city. There should be. Because there ought at least be a counterforce to say, we have an obligation to build more housing. We're not building nearly enough of it. We're way, way behind. And, and by the way, in District Two, there are a lot of people um, in need of affordable housing. And so, a- and by the way, if we were to vote no tonight, this project is going forward anyways. And by the way, it would go forward with an angry state of California. Who would say, we're gonna go ahead and find a way to do this anyways. And we would lose our designation as a number one uh, housing, a city in California. We'd probably jeopardize the receipt of millions of additional dollars of. Uh, uh, for infrastructure, including housing and transportation. Because we would be uh, sending a message, a message I don't think we wanna send to the state of California. That has a housing crisis in every city in this state. It's gonna get built. You got a developer who's willing to negotiate and work with the community. And you certainly have us, who are willing to talk to the state of California about being uh, sensitive to.
But ma- ma- Mr. Mayor, let's, with all due respect.
No, I have the floor here. Sean, sorry. I, I, I'm speaking. I, I didn't interrupt you. You disagree with me. I'm sorry, I'm not voting against affordable housing in this city. Not doing it. Be a hypocrite, actually. With all that we're trying to do around homelessness and all that we're trying to do to get people housed. We're gonna turn down uh, the potential of, if it's a hundred twenty-four years, or a hundred units or eighty units. Of, of workforce and affordable housing?
If it's destroying our city, I hope so, because that's why we got elected.
Let me tell you.
I represent District Two in Sacramento, not Governor Newsom, not the state.
Fine, and, and I, and I.
But I, I guess we all have our different uh.
I'm not done.
Agendas, so.
I am not done. You represent District Two, I represent the entire city. And we need more affordable housing. So let's work this out. And if you're gonna make a claim that any project is going to quote destroy a neighborhood. You better back it up with more than just uh, an angry assertion. Because it doesn't hold water with me and it's not gonna hold water with the majority of your colleagues tonight. Can you leave?
Well, I think destroying a community is just a common sense. Just drive by them. If you want more data, I'll get you more data. But the fact is, and this was, whether this is affordable or market rate or whatever it is, the location of this project is wrong. Nobody is questioning, nobody's arguing that we need affordable housing. We have a state, we have city-owned properties that we can put three hundred units on it. And I'm willing, and I've sat down, I've, I've got together with the developer that if we kinda turn that parcel to you. Can you make this, this property less units? But they're not gonna do it. That's the fact. And we don't have the connections with the state like you, but like we think, we, we, we were waiting.
Oh, really, oh, really, Councilmember, we don't have the connection.
We're waiting for one signature from Caltrans for a year now.
Okay. Is DGS on this call, by the way? Is your representative from the Department of General Services on this call? On the Zoom? I guess not. Tell you what, I'll go with you. Happily go talk to the Department of General Services about all the concerns. And, and, and hear their response. And, and work together to make this a great project. Great project for the community and house people who need housing. How about that for a commitment? Go talk to DGS together. Angela Lee.
I think that we need to really make a distinction here between buildings and people. The people that are going to live in this unit are going to be amazing. And they're going to totally contribute to District Two. And they'll shop at the coffee shops and ride the light rail and play in the park and go to the schools and be friends with the kids who already live there. And the people are going to be great. What I hear the community saying is that they have major concerns about the building. That they think that it's too big. And that you didn't add enough parking. And I, I know I've heard some members on this call talk about, you know, well, we're downgrading parking. But in North Sacramento, and, and really, there are only a couple of us that really live in and represent North Sac. It's very auto-centric. Low that we don't want it to be. Just because light rail goes by that spot doesn't mean that it is you know, not auto-centric, because the light rail doesn't go to all the places that you need it to go when you're in the northern part of the city. And so I guess, you know, I have three affordable low-income units under construction right now in my district, all this size or larger. And I think most of us do. And I think we're trying very hard as a city. I think every member of this council deserves credit for fighting really hard to find ways to do more affordable housing. And, you know, at the end of the day, this project's going to move forward with or without this council. And I just hear Councilmember Laloie fighting so hard to try to find some leverage for his community to be able to talk to the Bridge Housing Group about reducing density. Now, reducing down to twenty-five or fifty doesn't sound particularly reasonable. But maybe getting down to a hundred, maybe taking off, maybe four stories instead of five. I think they're worried about parking. The road is really narrow. In fact, it's going to make it difficult to access that light rail station for some folks. Because it has the same access point. So I guess, Mayor, my struggle here is the question in front of us, as Councilmember Harris has laid out, is do we sign our names to a letter that says that we support this project? And therefore would like the state to give Bridge five million dollars. I would feel a lot more comfortable saying yes to that if we were farther along in the conversation with the community, even if the community didn't like it. I feel like they haven't had a chance. And so I'm uncomfortable signing my name to that. Although I do like that we're having these kinds of conversations and aggressively pursuing these housing models across our city. I, I don't like what LaShel Dozier said, which is that once he puts in that application, he, the state's going to hold him to a hundred and twenty-five units. That's exactly what Councilmember Laloie's trying to avoid and what the community's trying to avoid. And I, I just don't think that we're here to help developers have enough money to build. We're here to, you know, stand up for community members. But we also, as the mayor has eloquently stated many times, we're also here to help people get housing. And we need to try to do that. We always have to seek out that balance. I'm not sure this project has quite found that balance yet, although I'm going to cheer to be wrong. I hope I'm wrong. I hope everything goes really smoothly. The community's happy. But I'd like to see the density be a slight bit lower and the community heard. And I, and for me, really, my vote tonight is predicated on the fact that I don't think S H R A has been involved and therefore sufficient outreach to the community has not occurred in a timely fashion. And I don't like being jammed up. If there was a way that we could do this vote, you know, Monday or something, I might have a different vote. But pretty hard for me to vote against a community and not give deference to a, a council member on a project that then can't be reduced once we take the vote.
No, fair enough. I don't agree, though, that, that it can't, the density cannot be reduced once we take this vote. And so I'm offering again to work with the council member and the community to talk to the Department of General Services about their concerns. I'm willing to do that. I don't know what the answer is, but if, if something is going to be detrimental or quote destroy the community, obviously, that's something we're going to take very, I'm going to take to heart. But I don't, I don't, I'm not convinced of that. Far from it. And I know we need the housing. So, but I'm willing to have that conversation with them. The state will be a good partner with us. We can sit and talk to them about this. And, and this vote doesn't change that one way or the other. This is just to assure that if we do, if they do go forward, we don't have to make a local contribution or there, or there isn't more of a, an issue than has already been expressed here tonight. I, I think the order, the way you described the order, just, I'm sorry, is not quite accurate. This vote does not mean that we can't have a discussion about density, about parking and about design. Doesn't mean that. Jeff, Harris last comment.
Yeah, thanks, Mayor. Look, you know, from a high-level position, going for more affordable housing is very attractive. From a policy position, it's very attractive. But what we cede, what we give up here by supporting this grant application is local land use control. Now, I heard you say that it's, it is problematic. You know, when land use decisions are held locally, you get a lot of opposition. People come and rattle their sabers and say things like Sean has said, this will destroy the community. All due respect, Sean, it won't destroy the community. It'll cause some stress points, absolutely. It won't destroy Woodlake. I don't, but, but that being said, hear me here, Sean, I don't think that this level of density is appropriate for that lot. And it is that local land use decision control that's very important to me. I do not like the state coming in heavy-handed and saying, you shall build this number of units. It's our property. We're going to do it. I, I, I just don't think that's right. Now, Mayor, if you're correct that we have some latitude to work with the state, I, I, I would love that. But I, you know, there's no guarantee of it.
No guarantee.
But, you know, the bottom line is Sean has other opportunity sites in D Two, for instance, Evergreen, where you could put more units in a better place, they could better access light rail and cause not anything like this stress to Woodlake. And, and we should be looking at those opportunities. That's why I say that local control of land use decisions is a better deal. It just simply is because we as council members can make better decisions about particular lots than the state can. So I have a real problem with this. To tell you the truth, the way I'm thinking right now, I would rather spend five million bucks of, of city money and to gain land use decisions down the road, working with S H R A, that's actually appealing to me. I mean, I don't like wasting city money, but I don't like being forced to build a project that I actually believe is, is out of proportion. So one last comment and question to John. John, is there any way you can apply for this grant funding round saying that you would build up to a hundred and twenty-five units, but not lock in a number? To, to give us some, some kind of guarantee that there's a conversation ensuing that we can get a project that's appropriate to that lot. And also, I'd like to say to you, you should look at this Evergreen property. It's better for Bridge Housing than this Armory Site will ever be.
Last question. Go ahead. I do have one more question. Go ahead, John.
I, I, we certainly won't say no to talking about an additional location in Sacramento. We're very excited to work in Sacramento with the city.
Dynasty. To the question, please.
But, um, look, you know, we've many times before submitted funding applications to the state and had to, for various reasons, whether it was concerns from the neighborhood, concerns about the original sort of vision for a development, no longer, you know, fitting with, with new, new regulations, had to go back and say, you know, hey, this was our honest vision for something, but we need to revisit the conversation. And we found that kind of like what Mayor Steinberg said, the state is usually reasonable in those conversations. These are not sort of firm commitments. You know, they're, they're subject to negotiation. So can we phrase our application such that it is up to this maximum amount? To be honest, I'll, I'll need to do a little digging into exactly the, the, the funding regulations and guidelines, but I wouldn't be surprised if there is latitude here, as, as Mayor Steinberg indicated. And you know, we, you know, based on this conversation and others we've had in, in North Sacramento with various neighborhood groups, we know that there's still some unresolved questions here and we're, we're going to continue to work on them.
All due respect, that's a soft answer. If you told me you could apply up to a hundred and fifty, I'd support this in a heartbeat. But given that we have no clear path to latitude in shaping this project to suit the community needs, and because I firmly believe there are other sites in the city, I have one in D Three that I would love to have your project on. At Sixty-Fifth and Folsom, we have another site. It'd be a perfect match. I, I just do not like giving this control away lock, stock and barrel to the state.
They have it anyways. I mean, the state, this is state property. They have the land use authority. Whether the developer applies for this money or not, the state can build. They can build in the way they want to build on this property. So you're not giving it away. They have it. And this decision has nothing to do with that. It's just whether or not the project is defended. I have one last question for Danielle. Because this hasn't been asked. If this, if there was local, let's just say there was more local land use authority, is this project as articulated consistent with the, with the city's zoning and city infrastructure requirements?
Yeah, the, the project has been designed to comply with city zoning and general plan designation and our infrastructure.
Call the roll, please.
So item number twelve was, a motion was made by Councilmember Valenzuela and a second by Gata. Vice Mayor Ashby? No. Councilmember Laloie?
Wrong, no, and I hope my colleagues will support that.
Councilmember Harris?
No.
Councilmember Valenzuela?
Yes.
Councilmember Sheneer?
Hi.
Mayor Protem Gata?
Hi.
Councilmember Jennings?
Yes.
Councilmember Vang?
No.
And Mayor Steinberg?
Yes.
The motion passes.
At five to four.
Ma- Madam City Clerk, can you, can you read the votes? Just the public. I, I think it's very important for the public to. No, no, it's very important, Mr. Mayor.
It's on the record, Sean.
Excuse me, it's on the record. You're out of order.
It's very important for the public to know.
Let's go on to the next item. Thank you.
Well, Mr. Mayor, if that's how you're going to run this session, then what's the point? I just listened to it from my house rather than sitting in the office. We are running a democracy here, aren't we? Or are we turning into a, a, a semi dictatorship, dictatorship on, on the name of affordability? I don't care about the state. I couldn't care less about our governor. I care about Sacramento. That's all I care about.
And that's all I care about, too. Madam Clerk, why not? Who voted which way? Go right ahead. That's fine.
The following members voted no, Ashby, Laloie, Harris and Vang. The following members voted yes, Valenzuela, Sheneer, Gata and Jennings and Steinberg.
Okay.
Mayor, I'll move the remainder of the consent calendar.
Yes, thank you.
I'll second.
I'll, uh, the roll.
Thank you. So the balance of the consent calendar is items one through eleven and thirteen through seventeen. Motion was made by Sheneer and second by Valenzuela. Vice Mayor Ashby?
Yes.
Councilmember Laloie?
Uh, sure, yes.
Councilmember Harris?
Hi.
Councilmember Valenzuela?
Yes.
Councilmember Sheneer?
Hi.
Mayor Protem Gata?
Hi.
Councilmember Jennings?
Yes.
Councilmember Vang?
Yes.
And Mayor Steinberg?
Yes. Okay, that passes. Members, I would like to continue just because obviously, the consent calendar took a couple hours here. The City Auditor's Twenty Twenty-Two Community Survey, I think that we talked to the City Auditor through my staff and that can wait a week or two and save us.
So moved, Mayor.
Second.
Okay. Call the roll, please.
Vice Mayor Ashby?
Yes.
Councilmember Laloie? Councilmember Harris? Councilmember Valenzuela?
Yes.
Councilmember Sheneer?
Hi.
Mayor Protem Gata?
Hi.
Councilmember Jennings?
This is a continuance item.
Councilmember Vang?
Yes.
And Mayor Steinberg?
Yes.
So we'll continue.
Mindy, I'm sorry, I had to step off for a second. The vote was on which item?
Continuing item number twenty-four, the City Auditor's Community Survey.
Oh, I'm an aye vote.
Thank you. And Councilmember Jennings, we were voting to continue item number twenty-four, the City Auditor's Community Survey. Are you an aye vote?
Yes.
Thank you.
I don't think we need to take a full vote on continuing an item. It can just be continued, please, without objection. Necessary. Members, with that objection, we have a lot of folks from the community who are waiting item twenty-seven. In fact, some of them are here in the chambers. And I'd like to take that item next. It shouldn't be long. You're only going to have one or two people testifying. So it should be relatively quick. And I'd like to take item twenty-seven now, please.
Great. Thank you, Mayor. And thank you, colleagues. It's my honor to present item twenty-seven, which is the repeal of the cruising ordinance tonight. This ordinance is a remnant of other days, days that bring painful memories for many of our residents. It's never too late to do the right thing. And after years of not using this ordinance for enforcement of any kind, I am truly proud to work with our police department, the city attorney and city manager to get to this point. And want to send a special shout out to the early and active engagement of our mayor, Councilmember Jennings and Vice Mayor Ashby in my brown act bubble. But I have to say that our city would not be at this moment if it were not for the tireless advocacy and organizing from the Sacramento Low Rider Commission. So to present this item, I'd like to pass the virtual mic to Olivia Fonseca from the Sacramento Low Rider Commission.
And Ms. Fonseca will be the, public will be the representative for the organization and the public testimony. That's okay. Unless there's anybody who's calling to oppose or. Go ahead.
My name is Olivia Fonseca. I'm a Sacramento Low Rider Commission member. I'm also a club member of the Compadres Bomb Club. I'm also a civil rights advocate for the low rider community here. Let me explain who we are. In this building, in the other room, are the Sacramento Low Rider Commission members, car clubs and solo rider representatives. We, the low rider community, are business owners, employers. We are engineers. We are civic service servants from the city, county, state and federal government. We are lawyers. We are paralegals. We are educators, jobs, union job stewards, health professionals, field tradesmen, photographers and musicians and more. We are hardworking citizens, is what I'm sharing with you. There are over forty low rider car clubs with hundreds of members and hundreds of solo riders. We are throughout the Sacramento city. We gather with our cars and we instantly become a family. We don't need a planned event to gather. We just go to the parks. We stop and before you know it, there's others stopped with us. And what do we do? We talk cars. We provide economic strength for families and we, we increase the tax base for the city. The local economy grows as a result of the niche market that serve the low rider owners. We increase the need for car mechanics, painters, upholsters, fuel, tires and wheels, thereby creating businesses and maintaining jobs in the local economy. We also provide for our youth. We provide them recreation and job training. We actually have them out, out there with us, detailing our cars, changing oils, learning about the vehicles and how they run. We also make a lot of civic contributions. We often respond to local neighborhood needs. We are involved in fundraisers and providing support to strangers, families, businesses and community organizations. For years, car clubs, car, low rider, solo riders, we have been supporting and sponsoring food drives. We do the turkey donations. We go to food banks. We sponsor elementary schools with food drives, toy drives. We contribute. We sponsor elementary schools with food drives, toy drives. We contribute to the annual CHP Christmas toy drive. Clothing drives, community social events. We contribute to Red Cross, we. Mental health, homeless, Y M C A, and I can go on. We host safe Halloween events for children. Dia de los Muertos is part of our culture. We support and sponsor holiday celebrations, New Year's Day, Cinco de Mayo, Fourth of July, Sesha Chavez Day, Veterans Day. And we use our cars often and we're requested often to pass by a birthday or anniversary. And show the families that we care as they wave and thank us for driving by. We also increase the use of the parks and recreation venues and points of interest. Car shows all the time, pop-up shows. We we host them everywhere near businesses. We also bring families together as recent as Sunday when we were at Southland Park. As you know, the city has experienced the Auto Town Museum Art of Low Riding. We brought in hundreds of outsiders to this event. And hundreds of thousands more to the auto rama. Again, this is our contribution as low riders in increasing the economy within the city. Low rider car owners, we're brown, we're black, we're Pacific Islanders, we're Asian, we're American Indian and we're white. Our gatherings do not discriminate based on race, color, national origin, ethnicity, age, disability or LGBT status. Everyone is welcome in our gatherings. So how did we get here? It started in January of twenty twenty two. New Year's Day. It is a day that all car owners, a lot of car owners here in Sacramento gather. At either Land, William Land Park or Miller Park. And we encountered barriers on New Year's Day. We were not able to enter Miller Park and we had a lot of gates closed on us at Land Park. But what did that happen? What did that do for us? It became a call to action. And that call to action form was formalized on February nineteen twenty twenty two. When we had Katie Valenzuela, Councilwoman Katie Valenzuela coming to meet with us. Over a hundred low rider representatives were in that room. And we voice our sadness of being, of having barriers. Place at these parks that are normally public parks. And we felt that they were targeted to us low riders. So as a result of that meeting. We formed the Sacramento Low Rider Commission. We are nonprofit of seventeen members. We are the Dukes, Compadres, Majestics, Family First, Relentless Sacramento. Fear None and Many Solo Riders. That's who the Sacramento Low Rider Commission is and represents. From February to today. We have been in over forty minute meetings. As you know, with you, Mayor, we have met with you a couple times. We met with every city council member for the most part. We met with Chief Lester, Captain Smock and Hanson, the Broadway Business Association, Land Park Association and many others. Forty meetings. We told you our stories. We told you about the injustices that we have been facing. We talked about the New Year's Day, Miller Park, Land Park, no cruising ordinance. No cruising signs and no backing into parking spaces. Incredibly harming us as low riders and seeing we saw those as targets. We talked about the stereotyping of our cars and the owner of the cars. The discriminatory actions that took place in the nineteen eighties. And on March twenty second nineteen eighty eight, the day the city passed an emergency ordinance. To stop us from low riding, to stop us from cruising. The ordinance targeted two minority groups. Brown and black minority groups, just because we drive low riders. But the ordinance cast a wider net. Not just us that are brown or black. But everyone else that happens to love low riding. And our youth, they weren't even born in nineteen eighty eight and they were harmed and have been harmed. But we tell our youth that they need to speak up as we are today. Yes, thirty four years ago. A harm placed on us. Thirty four years ago. But yet, we continue to contribute to the civic responsibilities in this city. We feed the homeless. We donate food. Donate, we do donate clothes, water, and we give, continue to give to charitable organizations. We clean parks, Miller, Land Park, Southside Park. We increase the tax receipts. We buy food, we pay taxes, we we are homeowners. We help the community heal during those unfortunate public incidents. And we help businesses recover from financial disasters. We are still helping and will continue to help. For thirty four years, we've had this cloud over our head for driving our beautiful cars. Our mobile art. On the boulevards of Sacramento. We are a humble group and we want to drive. Drive low and slow, not speed, not rev, not leave tire marks. We want this cloud lifted over our heads. Today, the hundreds of low rider car owners ask you to repeal the no cruising ordinance. Lift our spirits. Repeal the ordinance and take down those darn signs. Gracias.
Thank you, Olivia. That concludes our presentation. Mayor, I kindly ask for an aye vote on the repeal.
Of course. Do we have other public testimony, Madam Clerk?
Yes, Mayor, I show four hands raised to make comment on this item.
Okay, let's hear from the public and then we'll hear from the members and cast our votes.
First is a phone number, four three six six, Mr. Davis.
Yes, I would like to say this is, this is a bright day in the history of Sacramento. As a native. From Del Paso Heights, as a youngster. Low rider cars were all over Del Paso Heights. Why? Because the Chicanos and the blacks, when I was growing up, they were united. I I can mention many people who love low riders. I know people who own them now. And if you look at the hip hop generation, they love the low riders too. If you look at Snoop Dogg and. Eazy-E and a lot of the rappers mainly in Southern California. They show their respect for them. And so this is a wonderful thing that the city is getting ready to do. And I hope they do remove those signs and give them to, you know, people who are requesting them. So thi- this this is a wonderful gesture, Mayor, and whoever was leading the charge at the city council. So thi- this is, this is great. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Next speaker is Maria Elena.
Yes, good evening. First of all, I'd like to congratulate the city on stepping up and doing what many cities across the. State have been doing for a few years now in removing these cruising bans. Now that said, it's not lost on me what y'all did here, which is exactly what the Sacramento Low Rider Commission did to. Push this this issue, which is to stigmatize another marginalized group that's more mar- that's more vulnerable than they are. They are not homeowners. They might not even be car owners because the city might tow their home slash vehicle. So while y'all are talking about how great you are for assimilating into culture, I just want to remind you all that homeless people, yeah, they're job holders too. They're contributing members to their society too, their teachers, their elders, their respected members of the community. And when you target them with seven day mandates for displacement from public parks that the city has already established for them to be at. Well, honey, y'all just look just like the rest of the oppressors. So congratulations Sacramento Low Rider Commission. I really respect your identity politics and your punching low. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Our next speaker is Kathy Rodriguez.
Good evening, everyone. Kathy Rodriguez, I'm the president and CEO for the Sacramento Hispanic Chamber of Commerce. And I just wanted to call in in support of taking this ordinance down. I just want to say how impressed I've been by the Low Rider Commission and their organization and their outreach that they've done. To all the corridors and the communities where these signs are and finding out how the businesses, when they're out there, actually. They do so well. The shops, the restaurants have more activity because when the cars are there, it brings the people out. The cars that they have, they're beautiful, they're done, and it's families, families that are coming together to really create these, as they said, beautiful works of art that these cars are. So I just wanted to thank you for bringing this, you know, to council. I hope that you do repeal this. It's a time of our history when there were so many laws that were put in place that made people feel that they didn't belong. And every time people go by those signs, that's what they see. They don't see just no cruising. They see you don't belong here, don't come here. And so being able to repeal this will go a long way. So I just wanted to come in and say how much I support this and I hope that you do vote to repeal this tonight. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Final speaker on this item is Esmeralda Pena.
Good evening, council members and Mayor Steinberg. Esmeralda Pena here, Vice President of Human Resources for Banner. Also a board member of the Sacramento Hispanic Chamber of Commerce. As well as co-chair to the Latino Economic Council here in Sacramento, California. I, like Kathy, do appreciate you bringing this on to the agenda. So being a local businesswoman and being a part of the community and supporting the council and establishing. Policies and practices to better the Sacramento community. In partnership with you, Mayor Steinberg, as well as Eric Gata, who has been a proponent of supporting the low rider community. Early on in my partnership with Eric, we both have strived to. Not only acknowledge what the Latino community brings, but overall in general, regardless of race. How we support the community and its GDP to the Sacramento community. It's important to note that me as a leader here in Sacramento, this is my downtime. I low ride with my husband, my children. The car that I cruise. Councilmembers and and Mayor is a car that we built and we restored from ground up and it's a legacy. That we carried on from a family member, my father-in-law. We support events, we support local homeless, we support. Senior homes that they get to see these nice classic cars restored. So I encourage you to support the initiative of bringing down the signs because they are no longer being enforced. Thank you for this time and thank you and have a good evening.
Thank you for your comments. Mayor, I have no more speakers.
Okay, thank you. I know Mayor Protem Gata wanted to make, second the motion. Let him do that and I'll have you speak and Vice Mayor, Councilmember Harris, I'd like to make a brief comment and then we're gonna vote.
Well, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Did my colleague, Councilmember Valenzuela, already moved the item?
Thank you. Thank you, Mayor Protem. On behalf of the approximately forty people on the fifth floor right now and the countless folks in Caesar Chavez Park and around the city watching this meeting. Happy to move for the repeal of the no cruising ordinance.
Second. Well, I want to make sure we get that part first out of the way. And thank you, Mr. Mayor. And first, I, you know, how proud I am of all of the organizing, the community work. You know, and and to thank for the the low rider community. Number of of the organizations and number of the car clubs had joined in multiple efforts over the years to bring about awareness. A a number of our areas such as when the elections were coming, getting out the vote. Making sure that we talked about also the impacts to our our community and and doing efforts to bring attention to funding for education and access to education. Even most recently, in the 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 Rally for Row, our car club members participated in that aspect as well. And bringing awareness to an issue about civil liberties and civil rights. And so to say that that, you know, this is a monumental moment because it it is changing, going directly to end a stigma. That I remember as a teenager. And in the mid nineties, my brother and I worked on 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 low riders and cruised on low riders. My brother, my younger brother, you know, had a sixty six T-bird. And and we enjoyed that part of our culture. And even now, we fast forward to today to, you know, when we had the art of low riding at the California Auto Museum. I was fortunate to catch up to some of my old Sac State alumni who are now teachers, who are now, you know, professionals. Our own employees in our city in our public works department are, you know, people who are engineers for our own employees. They are also members of the low rider community. And that stigma has has been around for a long time. Even when we tried to put together the Back to the Boulevard events, you know, in Councilmember Shenir's district. There were questions about, well, what does this mean? And frankly, I'll tell you for me personally, what is, what does cruising mean? What is the low rider community? What does that all mean to me? Cruising, you know, means family. Cruising means culture and cruising means community. When these events get together and when anyone cruises, they bring their parents or kids, they bring out lawn chairs. People enjoy and learn on. About everyone's ingenuity and their art involved in the in low riding. And if we want kids to be involved in looking at. You know, whether it's vocational education or engineering or STEM, hey, this is one of the coolest ways to do it. Because it takes all of that to put this together, the science and the art involved in low riding. And so the fact that we're taking this moment here, I think is important. There was an article placed in the in the B two years ago about this stigma. And it brought back a lot of harsh memories for a lot of us about being singled out. And I know I've gotten calls from my own constituents on, well, is this gonna, you know, create more, you know, speeding and and sideshows and people burning out? Well, if anybody's ever been and seen to a low ride. Nobody wants anyone burning out, kicking up rocks, chipping this classic paint, you know. All of this detail that's gone into, you know, creating a mural, creating an expression onto one of these. But most importantly, it's less about the cars and more about the community. And it's more about the people in the vehicles and about what that expression has been going on for decades. And to see some of the family members who were in the set, who were cruising in the sixties and seventies, show up and 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 learn about this issue. It brought tears to their their heart because now their grandkids and great grandkids are are starting this culture. And and so this move here today, I gotta say, from a personal standpoint. It is, it is a great feeling that we're we're taking away the stigma and we're leading in California to remove that. Now on, just on the, as I was mentioned earlier, there are laws in the books already for things like impeding driveway. There are laws in the books already. For impeding an intersection. The cruising ordinance was specifically targeted for a community. And this is exciting for us to be part of making sure that that stigma ends today. So with that, Mr. Mayor, I'm proud to second the motion.
Good. Thank you. Thank you. Vice Mayor?
I'll be quick. Mayor, I've already spoken enough tonight, but I I just want to thank Councilmember Valenzuela for putting me in her initial brown, brown act bubble and letting me be. A part of this conversation early on because actually it's been really fun. It's been fun to watch you work and it's been really fun to work with the Low Rider Commission. What a wonderful group of people. There are so many people from all over the city and. And I've lived here a long time, right? I went to Sac High and and that, you know, the cruise in the nineties for Sac High was a big deal and I got to see a lot of old friends from that. And it's it's a no-brainer to support this. It's is long overdue. Easy to vote yes, but Councilmember Valenzuela, you did a really good job with this. Proud of you. You should be proud of yourself and. And I'm really proud of all of the folks on the Low Rider Commission who who put together a really great argument and did exactly what we. What we ask people in this city to do as a community. Come together, come to your council and be heard. So this this is a win-win. And it's fun to be a part of. Easy to support. Thanks for making it easy, Councilmember Valenzuela. And thank you to the Low Rider Commission for being such great advocates for everyone in our city. It's gonna be a good day.
Thank you. Councilmember Harris?
Thank you, Mayor. A lot of the people on the Low Rider Commission live in the North Gate neighborhood. And I've had the pleasure of associating with them over the years of my tenure. And I've had the pleasure of associating with them over the years of my tenure. They've been an integral part of the Little League Parade that we re-instituted on North Gate of the Cinco de Mayo Parade. These are good people, they're good community members. They do contribute a lot and I'm definitely gonna support this. Problems may arise. Look, you're right now, our ordinance is unenforceable, so it's kind of a moot point. But I believe that the low rider community should issues arise. Arise, we'll we'll work hard to resolve anything and again, participate in our community in a very constructive way. And I gotta tell you, the movable art is pretty stellar. It is amazing, some of these cars. And so I think this is a positive thing for the city to do and I'm in support.
Thank you, sir. Councilmember Jennings?
Thank you, Mayor. I I'm proud to support this motion. I'm proud to join my colleagues in. Writing a wrong that has been wrong for far too many years. And it is offensive to a culture, to a group of folks that love their cars, love their families, love their communities, love the Sacramento region. And are not feeling the same love coming back. And so we know that these signs are offensive and and they're, they would be if if we were going through the same situation and that needs to change. And so I'm happy to see that the repeal of this ordinance is in front of us tonight so that we can take that down and take that stigma down. And it doesn't continue to go from this generation to the generation of their children. Their children will not have to fight this battle. I've been in parks and in nonprofit organizations and in the community with the Low Rider Commission. Where they fed the hungry, where they have provided home haircuts for the homeless. Where they have show cars that have been in the Sacramento Car Museum. And they had more visitors in the car museum when the cars were there than any other time in the history of the museum. And so they they invest in their these cars, but more importantly, they invest in the city of Sacramento. And they are a good partner and will continue to be a good partner for years to come. They police themselves. And so we don't, there there is no concern in my mind at all of repealing this ordinance. And I'm looking forward to it happening tonight.
Thank you so much, everybody. Just some quick thank you. Councilmember Valenzuela, thank you for leading the charge here. This is a it's a special night, it really is. And you really led and I appreciate it. Obviously to the Low Rider Commission of Francine, to Olivia, to Flavio, to all the leaders. Also want to thank our police department and the chief and Captain Hanson because, you know, this could have been a real. This could have dragged out for a long time, but you know, they got it. And and rightfully pointed out that we need to make sure we can enforce the laws against. Against reckless driving and and speeding and sideshows, et cetera. But recognized as we all do that that isn't what cruising is about. It is a beautiful part of our culture and our history. And I just want to say something to the young people. I had the chance to speak to one of the young activists at the park before the meeting. This is one to study. Because if you're ever, you know, get to that place of cynicism, which would be understandable, that not that things can't change. They can't change, right? It's too hard, too many stodgy adults in charge. Here's an example of where your voice, the voice of young people, the voice of adults stepping forward and demanding justice in the right way and organizing. Leads to change. Change is possible and justice is possible. This may not be, you know, well, this is certainly not the end of anything. But again, it is a really important move to respect our community in this way. And I, it's it's a proud night and be very proud to cast this. I vote tonight. Councilmember Valenzuela, last word?
Last word to Mr. Chan, our city manager. We still want those signs, so make sure that you save those signs for us. You had a lot of car club presidents who were very excited about that.
Absolutely, we'll be collecting them and we'll find a way to get those distributed.
Excellent. And with that respectfully request, you support this motion, colleagues. Thank you so much for all of your support and thank you again to the Low Rider Commission.
Let's call the roll.
Vice Mayor Ashby?
Proudly, yes.
Councilmember Laloie?
Aye.
Councilmember Harris?
Aye.
Councilmember Valenzuela?
Yes.
Councilmember Chenier?
Absolutely.
Mayor Protem Geta?
Aye.
Councilmember Jennings?
Enthusiastically, yes.
Councilmember Vang?
Yes.
And Mayor Steinberg?
Si, se puede, yes. Excellent, unanimous, which is the only way a vote like this could and should be.
So I know not all of you are at City Hall, but I can actually hear the yelling from Caesar Chavez Park right now. So you've just made a lot of cruisers very happy.
Great stuff, thank you again. Good night, okay. Members, let's see if we can get through items eighteen through twenty-three and twenty-five quickly so that we can get to the cannabis item, which would be our last. Important item of the evening, okay? Items, item eighteen.
Good evening, Mayor, Madam City Clerk, and members of the City Council. My name is Jimmy Byram, City Surveyor with Engineering Services Division, Department of Public Works. Before you this evening is an item which proposes adopting a resolution to vacate. The public right of way known as Twelfth Street between L Street and N Street in downtown Sacramento. This vacation request by the California Joint Committee on Rules is being made to accommodate the new Capitol Annex Building. Which includes restoration, rehabilitation, and reconstruction of the state Capitol Annex Building. Public Works staff along with other utility agencies support this vacation request. Furthermore, this project is consistent with the Sacramento twenty thirty-five general plan and it's in compliance with California Streets and Highways Code. This concludes my presentation and if you have any questions, staff is available.
Thank you so much, any public testimony?
Mayor, I have no hands raised to make comments on this item.
Okay, is there a mo- motion?
Yes, Mayor, happy to open and close the public hearing and move the item.
Second.
Call the roll, please.
Council, Vice Mayor Ashby?
Yes.
Councilmember Laloie?
Aye.
Councilmember Harris?
Aye.
Councilmember Valenzuela?
Yes.
Councilmember Chenier?
Aye.
Mayor Protem Geta?
Aye.
Councilmember Jennings?
Yes.
Councilmember Vang?
Yes.
And Mayor Steinberg?
Yes. All right, thank you, that passed nine, nothing, item nineteen.
Good evening, Mayor Steinberg and Councilmembers, Eric Frederick with the Finance Department. The item before you is the annual public hearing for the Neighborhood Landscaping District. Annual assessments are levied in the district to finance the maintenance of landscaping improvements located adjacent to and or along the frontage. Of thirty-four subdivisions located throughout the city. Staff's recommendation is to conduct the public hearing and upon conclusion, adopt the resolution in your packet that will confirm the budget and levy the assessments for fiscal year twenty twenty-two, twenty-three. Thank you and I'm available for any questions.
Assume no public testimony, Madam Clerk?
That's correct, I have no hands raised to comment on this item.
Okay, moved by.
Open and close the public hearing.
You're happy to open and close the public hearing? Yes, second.
Okay, moved by Councilmember Chenier, second by Vice Mayor, please call the roll.
So Councilmember Chenier, open and close the public hearing and move the item. And Vice Mayor Ashby was a second.
Vice Mayor, second.
Thank you, Vice Vice Mayor Ashby?
Yes.
Councilmember Laloie?
Aye.
Councilmember Harris?
Aye.
Councilmember Valenzuela?
Yes.
Councilmember Chenier?
Aye.
Mayor Protem Geta?
Aye.
Councilmember Jennings?
Yes.
Councilmember Vang?
Yes.
And Mayor Steinberg?
Yes. Nine, nothing, thank you, item twenty.
Good evening, I apologize. My name is Arwen Watt with the Finance Department. The item before you this evening is the annual public hearing for the Village Garden Landscape Maintenance District. Which provides funding for maintenance and repair of masonry walls, landscaping, and irrigation systems. For the areas within the Northwind and Northwood subdivisions. Staff's recommendation is to open the public hearing and upon conclusion, adopt the resolution that will confirm the assessment diagram and levy the assessment. For fiscal year, fiscal year twenty twenty-two, twenty-three for this district. This concludes my presentation, I'm available to answer any questions you may have, thank you.
Thank you. Do we have a motion in a second? I'll move to open and close the public hearing and move the item.
Second.
Second by Councilmember Geta, please call the roll.
Vice Mayor Ashby?
Yes.
Councilmember Laloie?
Aye.
Councilmember Harris?
Aye.
Councilmember Valenzuela?
Yes.
Councilmember Chenier? Councilmember Chenier?
Aye, sorry.
Mayor Protem Geta?
Aye.
Councilmember Jennings?
Yes.
Councilmember Vang?
Yes.
And Mayor Steinberg?
Yes. We up to twenty-two now?
Yes.
Okay, twenty-two.
Okay.
Do you have time on twenty-one?
Oh, did I not do twenty-one? That's why I asked, okay, twenty-one.
I apologize, that was mine also. This item before you is the annual public hearing for the Power and Road Maintenance District. The district provides funding for the maintenance of drainage improvements along power and road between Fourteenth Avenue and the Regional Transit Overcrossing. Located just south of Folsom Boulevard. Staff's recommendations to open the public hearing and upon conclusion, adopt the resolution in your packet that will confirm the assessment diagram and levy the assessment for this fiscal year. For the Power and Road Maintenance District and I'm available to answer any questions you may have.
All right, seeing none, I'll open and close the public hearing and move the items, second by Council, Mayor Protem Geta.
Thank you, and for the record, there. For the record, there is no hands raised to make public comment on this item. Vice Mayor Ashby?
Yes.
Councilmember Laloie?
Aye.
Councilmember Harris?
Aye.
Councilmember Valenzuela?
Yes.
Councilmember Chenier?
Aye.
Mayor Protem Geta?
Aye.
Councilmember Jennings?
Yes.
Councilmember Vang?
Yes.
And Mayor Steinberg?
Yes, all right, that passes, now we move to item twenty-two.
And this is my last one for this evening. This one is the annual public hearing for the Neighborhood Lighting District, which includes three neighborhoods. Swanson Estates, Colonial Heights, and Youngs Heights. The assessments are levied to provide funding for the maintenance and energy costs of neighborhood lighting in these areas. The annual assessments reach subdivision very based on operational needs and are at or below the maximum authorized light rates. Staff's recommendation is conduct the public hearing and upon conclusion, adopt the resolution in your packet that will confirm the assessment diagram and levy the fiscal year. For the Neighborhood Lighting District. I'm available to answer any questions you may have, thank you.
Thank you all.
I'll open and close the public hearing, move the item.
Second.
Beat me to it, very good. Please call the roll, no public testimony, assume Madam Clerk.
That's correct, there's no one to make public comment on this item. Vice Mayor Ashby?
Yes.
Councilmember Laloie?
Aye.
Councilmember Harris?
Aye.
Councilmember Valenzuela?
Yes.
Councilmember Chenier?
Aye.
Mayor Protem Geta?
Aye.
Councilmember Jennings?
Yes.
Councilmember Vang?
Yes.
Mayor Steinberg?
Yes. All right, that passes, item twenty-three.
Good evening, Mayor and members of council, Mary Jean Rodriguez with your Finance Department. The public hearing before you tonight is the adoption of Panhandle PanUnit Development Public Facilities Finance Plan. An excess study twenty twenty-two update in accordance with the Amendmentation fee Act in the new statute eighty-six oh-two. On July third of twenty eighteen, council approved the Panhandle project entitlements and adopted the Panhandle PUD. Public Facility Finance Plan that identified the infrastructure required for build-out and potential financing mechanism. The finance plan proposed a fee to fund majority of the backbone infrastructure. The finance plan now has been updated to reflect current costs and include an excess study. To provide the required findings necessary for the establishment of the Panhandle in fact fee. The updated finance plan updates the cost of the backbone infrastructure and public facilities to reflect current construction costs. At build-out, backbone infrastructure and the other public facilities are estimated to cost up to between seventy million dollars. The proposed fee program will fund thirty-nine million dollars of that infrastructure. With that said, staff recommends to open the public hearing and upon conclusion, pass a resolution adopting the Panhandle PanUnit Development. Public Facilities Finance Plan and excess study twenty twenty-two update. City staff and our consultants, economic planning systems are now available to answer any question, thank you.
Thank you so much, Mary Jean, and thank you to Sherri Smith and her team, Mayor. This is actually a really big deal, this is moving forward with the Panhandle Plan Unit. Really exciting, lots of houses, Madam Clerk, I'm assuming there's no one signed up to speak?
That's accurate, there's no one signed up to speak on this item.
All right, then I will both open and close the public hearing, thank city staff for their hard work, this is many years in the making and move the item there.
Thank you, let's call the roll, please.
I'll second that item if no one else has done so.
Thank you, Councilmember Jennings, Vice Mayor Ashby?
Yes.
Councilmember Laloie?
Aye.
Councilmember Harris?
Aye.
Councilmember Valenzuela?
Yes.
Councilmember Chenier?
Aye.
Mayor Protem Geta?
Aye.
Councilmember Jennings?
Yes.
Councilmember Vang?
Yes.
And Mayor Steinberg?
Yes, thank you so much, we have one more item before we get to the cannabis item. And that is item twenty-five.
Good evening, Mayor and members of the City Council, I'm Brian Wong with the Treasury's Office. The item before you includes two recommended actions. The first is passing a motion to waive a portion of this in code. Specifically session four point zero four point zero two zero. And that portion of the city code refers to agreements that are in excess of a million dollars. And in in consultation with the City Attorney's Office. We felt it was necessary to include this waiver because the language in the city code generally pertains to. Items related to the city's general fund or other funds. And the action before you is related to assess special taxes that are levied on taxable property within the Delta Shores CFT improvement area number two. The second action is the request to pass a resolution that would authorize the issuance of CFP bonds for Delta Shores improvement area number two. Let me share a map real quick. Seem to be having technical issues. So Delta Shores Improvement Area Two is located just south of Pasadena River Boulevard and east of Interstate five. So prior to the council redistricting, Delta Shores was primarily in Council District number seven. And with a redistricting, improvement area number two is in now Councilmember Vang's district. And so the action this evening is requesting opposition to be able to issue the first series of bonds for improvement area number two. In an amount not to exceed twelve million dollars. And I want to point out, similar to other CFP bonds that the city has authorized in the past. The repayment of those bonds are not based on the city's general fund or any other fund. They're solely on revenues that are going to be derived from special taxes that are levied and imposed on taxable properties within improvement number number two. Included in your package are various actions and documents that will authorize the city treasurer to be able to execute. With that, that concludes my remarks and I'm available for any questions that you may have, thank you.
Okay, thank you, Councilman Jen- or this Councilmember Vang now, excuse me.
Technically, it's still in Jennings District until it ends in November.
Oh, that's correct, I forgot, we had that discussion.
So Mayor, we've we've reviewed this and and supported and at this point in time, I'd like to move the item.
Open and close.
Open and close the public hearing and move the item.
Second by Councilmember Vang?
Yes, second by Vang.
And there is, there is no public testimony, Madam Clerk?
I do have one hand raised to make comment on this item, Barry Boyd.
Mr. Boyd?
Thank you, Mindy, thank you, council. I do ask and would like to see the entirety of the map. Mr. Wong was trying to pull up just so. We're all clear that it is the boundaries for this bond is that of the. Delta Shores area that borders existing the Metta View neighborhood. So that in fact, it is only the concentration of the. Again, the undeveloped area of Delta Shores. If someone would address my question to to making sure that the. Agenda item here is asking for the waiver as it was explained. But making sure that the area of which the bond in Melrose has been proposed is strictly that of the undeveloped Delta Shores area, thank you. but making sure that the area of which the bond in Melrose has been proposed is strictly that of the undeveloped Delta Shores area. Thank you.
Mayor, I have no more public comments. Appears I do, Mayor. TK?
Yes, I have a question. I want to know what is going to be done about the donuts that are taking place in District Eight. A lot of illegal dumping taking place in District Eight. And I have addressed these concerns with the councilwoman, as well as within our neighborhood association. And I just want to know what efforts are being made to stop the donuts, to stop the illegal dumping, and if someone could address my question, I'd appreciate it. Thank you.
Mayor, I have no more public comments.
Does anybody want to address the caller's question, or do you want to, we can get?
Mayor, we'll have staff follow up with the woman on the call.
Okay, really appreciate that, thank you.
Yeah.
Okay. Very good. So. Let's call the vote.
Thank you. There was a motion made by Councilmember Jennings and a second by Vang. Vice Mayor Ashby.
Yes.
Councilmember Laloie.
Aye.
Councilmember Harris.
Aye.
Councilmember Valenzuela.
Yes.
Councilmember Chenier.
Aye.
Mayor Protem Gata.
Aye.
Councilmember Jennings.
Yes.
Councilmember Vang.
Yes.
And Mayor Steinberg.
Yes. All right, that passes, you know, thank you, members, and Madam Clerk, and all the staff for working through those items. We now move to item twenty-six, which is a report of the comprehensive cannabis study and policy recommendations. I want to thank Councilmember Chenier for, you know, leading really hard on this issue and using important, you know, precious time at the long ledge committee to really dive into this study and break it down, along with Davina Smith and Laney Millstein and the team. I think you're presenting us a real thorough set of recommendations, and we appreciate it. I don't know whether Jay or Davina want to start us here tonight, but go ahead.
If I can, if I can frame it just a little bit of how to go here.
Please do, please do.
And then I'll have comments at the end as well. You know, the city has really been involved in this industry for over a decade, and we've done, I think, a pretty good job of regulation, understanding that there was no model out there. And so for us, it was more or less making it up as we went along. We did a lot of things right, we did some things that we could have done better. But we always knew at some point we would have to take a break and kind of look at the industry comprehensively in Sacramento and update what we've done to meet the times. So we did that. We hired EPS to do a consulting gig on this, and they looked at very comprehensively what was happening in the industry. We spent three law and legislation meetings with our team here, both Davina, Laney, Zara, Larissa, but then also as a huge thank you for the amount of work that they did. But then I also want to thank the Law and Legislation Committee, Councilmembers Gera, Harris, and Valenzuela, for really taking the time, as the mayor said, to dig into this. And went through the report and really divided it up into three chunks. One was around ownership, and we've had lots of discussions over that, about that over a period of time, land use and tax structure. So those were the ways that we attacked it, and I think working with staff came up, working with staff, listening to public comment, listening to the stakeholder meetings through Davina, really came up with some good recommendations that I think situate the city as we go forward. We have two goals overall in mind. One is keeping a healthy industry. We know that there are threats to the industry between federal-led, potential federal legislation, state legislation, venture capital companies coming in to buy up what they can. We also know that, you know, this is fragile, and we want to protect particularly the core members who are smaller. So one was keeping a healthy industry, but then two was keeping revenues flowing for the city. Through the tax structure that we have now, which is BOT, and then our percentage of sales tax, we're close to twenty-five million dollars a year flowing into the general fund from cannabis. So we want to continue that, and that doesn't count what we've done around illegal seizures and things like that. So we, as I said, we did three meetings. The Law and Legislation Committee, actually four meetings, spent probably seven hours talking about this, listening to folks again from the community, from our core folks and others, and came up with a set of recommendations, working with staff, that Davina, I believe, will be putting before you tonight. I do want to say that there are some things that we did not get to for various reasons. One is a lot of questions around equity. There is an equity study, which Davina will talk about, which is out in RFP right now, or maybe it's chosen, I'm not sure, but we'll get to that. And then also questions about land use that we refer to the Planning and Design Commission to come up with recommendations for that. So this is not the be-all and end-all of cannabis, but I think it does a good job setting up future councils and hopefully giving them flexibility to meet the times as this industry continues to mature one way or another. So with that, I just want to say again, thank you, Davina, to you and your crew and Laney, and then also to the members of the committee for really having the patience. This is one of the more thoughtful discussions that we've had and in-depth discussions about any issue since I've been on the council for nearly twelve years now. So I will turn it over to Ms. Smith.
Thank you very much. I will share my screen and provide a PowerPoint. Okay. So, thank you for that introduction, Councilmember Chenier. I think that the items that came out of that were very thoughtful, and I think they were really collaborative, and they included recommendations from the public, from the committee members and from staff as well. I do want to make sure that people know that there, as was mentioned, we have this parking lot, items that need additional work or data collection. And some of those issues are issues around the core ownership term for a storefront dispensary. This and a number of other items are waiting from data from the equity study. We have completed the RFP and we have chosen a contractor, and we're in the process of signing a contract with them now. We look forward to that study being presented closer to the end of the year, beginning of next year, so that's going to be really exciting. At that time, we intend to bring back sort of a comprehensive set of equity plan issues for your consideration. Another issue was odor and cultivation. Those items are things that we're continuing to work on, both with our partners in code enforcement, with the Power and Alliance, and with other community members. We're continuing to work with the police department on security requirements for continued effectiveness and making sure that they have the ability to modify them as needed to respond to changing situations. We were asked to also include, you know, working on options to assist neighborhoods impacted by the war on drugs. So that's something we're reaching out to our city partners in the city attorney's office, the Neighborhood Development Action Team, and the Office of Community Engagement to engage on those. And then, of course, we're working on some of our public health issues around cannabis advertising on billboards, and adult-use high THC product limitations. We're working on that with the city attorney's office, and we look forward to continuing that work. And as these come to fruition, we will be bringing these to your council. So the workshops were scheduled to really kind of talk about specific areas. First was ownership, second was business locations, and third was taxation. The EPS team, who were the authors of the study, did a great job on that, and they were present at all of those workshops to provide both an overview of the study itself, as well as more in-depth information about those study focus areas. They are on the call for this meeting, and they're able to answer any questions if people have them about methodology or particulars. I'm going to talk about key takeaways from that study, but if anyone wants to know more in depth, they are here and able to talk and address those issues specifically. So some of the key study takeaways on ownership really had to do with that this industry is evolving. As Councilmember Chenier mentioned, these corporate structures are becoming more multi-layered, more involved. There's more vertical integration going on, more multi-state operators. And it's becoming really, you know, sort of this pretty big business industry. We also regulate more than we do any other business type in the city of Sacramento. And I think it's important to note that all jurisdictions are struggling with ownership issues. I know I had a conversation with Councilmember Laloie where he asked, you know, who's doing it well? Who can we model ourselves after? And, you know, it's interesting, because when I talk to my colleagues in other jurisdictions, both in this state and in other states, we're all struggling with the issues of ownership. So, you know, I think it's important to know that we're not alone in this. We're all trying to figure it out, and hopefully we will land on something that will work best for us. So the policy goals that came about when we were thinking about recommendations based upon committee input, public input, stakeholder input, was that we really need a diverse and equitable ownership, particularly around a limited permit type, and we want to do a regulatory balance so we're not over-regulating or under-regulating. And like with any business, we need to allow business owners to obtain investments and perform succession planning. And we want to discourage monopolies of our limited permit types and really disincentivize exceeding those ownership limits. And so to achieve those policy goals, we came up with a number of recommendations, and these were the ones that the Law and Legislation Committee voted to bring forward to your council. They voted to take no action on expiring prohibition for transfer of storefront dispensary ownerships that has expired and to change it, our business ownership transfer model to something that will basically mimic the state's current model, where less than one hundred percent transfers are allowed. But if it's a hundred percent transfer, a new application has to be submitted. We will allow a certain period of time, ninety days, for that application to be submitted and approved, or the permit subject to a revocation or denial. And we will allow businesses to operate during that ninety-day period. And finally, transfers should only occur no frequently than once every six months in order to disincentivize the flipping of permits, where, you know, in two days, I can have a hundred percent ownership change without going through a new application process. The second recommendation that the committee wanted to bring forward to council consideration is around our one-person, one-storefront dispensary rule. Currently, we allow only one ownership per dispensary. And the idea here is that to allow a certain amount of investment to happen. So up to five percent ownership would be allowed in an unlimited number of dispensaries, but you couldn't own more than five percent in more than one dispensary. And then for storefront franchises, this is something new that we've been encountering. We would ask them to identify themselves and again, limit them to only one per city. Since storefront dispensaries, franchises can have a different ownership. Technically, they could be, there could be multiples of those in the city, and we want to make sure that consumers have choice in where they shop and the products they're able to get. We want to make sure that small businesses and our equity businesses have a chance to compete on store shelves, which they may not be able to get through franchises. The fourth recommendation that the committee wanted to bring forward was to make a change in the ownership definition for all cannabis businesses. And this is, again, is a modified state model. We're adding F, G, and H to what the state already does. And this is to address the franchisor-franchisee managing companies and then trustees. The idea here is to really try to nail down who is an owner and who isn't an owner. So there's no surprise on the staff side, and there's no surprise on the business side. And then tracking ownership for cannabis businesses. We currently spend a lot of staff time, and I'm sure businesses spend a lot of time getting their corporate documents together, their meeting minutes, and sending them to us. We want to continue to take that information in. We want to see exactly how much everyone owns in our cannabis business. So we would be wanting to know a hundred percent ownership for all businesses. We would hold on to that information for our internal records. We would also ask that a signed affidavit would be submitted so that if there's, you know, not truthful information on that, it would be sort of a big stick to disincentivize people from not listing the ownership correctly. Because then that permit, as well as any other permit that ownership is involved in, could be subject to permit revocation or denial. So those were the five recommendations around ownership. I realize that's a little dense. This is an area where, you know, it really is kind of a policy wonk area. We think these will put us in line with what other jurisdictions are doing in our state, and we think this will basically allow us to do the regulatory work. We need to provide oversight of the industry, but also not be so burdensome upon industry that it would be a problem. So the next area that we looked at were business locations. And some of those key study takeaways that we had were around the fact that we have our zoning and sensitive uses do restrict where businesses can locate, which has caused concerns around concentration in certain areas. The EPS study found that while there were areas that had more dense cannabis businesses, it didn't seem to affect the commercial residential land values over time, and that some of the neighborhood impacts that we had been concerned about when we first stood up this program around crime, around property values, around sort of neighborhood sort of character weren't really being seen. There was also an interesting thing that there's, it seems that interest in indoor cultivation permits may decrease over time as the outdoor cultivations, you know, rise in central California and the central coast, where there are large properties available for outdoor cultivation. So indoor cultivation may not be a strong driver long-term. So in looking at business locations, our policy goals around there really centered around, you know, are these still serving our purposes? You know, we enacted them for particular, particular goals. Are those goals still being achieved? Are they still meaningful to us? I also thought it was important to have a goal of reducing pressure in the current zones that allow cannabis so that there's not those concerns those districts have over over-concentration. I think it was important to have more equity in the distribution of businesses across the city. And we thought that it's important to encourage regulation of cannabis on a holistic level, as opposed to a district-by-district patchwork. And then, of course, incubation, we think, is very important, both for our small businesses and our equity businesses. The cannabis business is very expensive to get into, and this is a way of entry, and we think we should support that. So those were our goals as we came forward with recommendations. So the six of the nine recommendations were around asking the Planning and Design Commission to review those current sensitive use and zoning issues. And specifically, the committee wanted your council to think about opening additional zones for storefront and delivery dispensaries and non-volatile manufacturing, and that includes infusion and packaging businesses. To consider storefront dispensaries as an allowed use in the C-three zone and the RMX zone. To consider limiting cannabis-sensitive uses to schools, youth centers, drug and alcohol treatment centers, neighborhood community parks, and faith-based institutions. And then to consider reviewing suitability of mixed-lite cultivation uses in industrial manufacturing zones, and whether those facilities should be built with an eye to repurposing when they reach the end of their lives. And finally, given our location here in the middle of the Central Valley with access to great universities like Sac State, UC Davis, our wonderful community college districts, should we have a zoning and permit type for cannabis research and development facilities? And then seven and eight dealt with district caps and shared those shared cannabis facilities. In my discussions with the Power and Alliance, it seems that cultivation is a primary concern to them. Currently, there is a cap on cultivation and distribution. And so it's lot perhaps by moving, removing distribution, we can focus the concern where it is, which is on cultivation and remove distribution from that equation. And again, supporting shared cannabis facilities where we can, while still including security and accountability requirements as part of good management of the industry. And then finally, taxation was the last big area that we looked at. Some of the key study takeaways were that our current tax rate of four percent across the board for all cannabis businesses did not appear to be out of line with our region. It did not appear to be overly It did not appear to be overly burdensome for our businesses, and it didn't appear to be driving businesses away. And as was mentioned earlier by Councilmember Shenier, those that that operating business tax is. A a big contributor to the city's general fund. On the other hand, the study did seem to find that state cultivation and excise taxes. Do appear to overly burden the industry and encourage the underground market. There's also a number of proposals, both at the state level and two at the federal level. The federal level ones are looking at taking cannabis off the Schedule One and making it legal. But then imposing certain taxes. One at fifteen percent, one at three percent. And then at the state level, there were a number of bills or there are a number of bills to. Reduce taxes and have various tax levels for both the the cultivation tax and the excise tax. So because of these uncertainties, and of course, the the governor just released his new budget last last week, I believe it was. That talked about another tax rate change for for cannabis businesses. It seemed a little. There's a lot of uncertainty in in what's going on with taxes right now. So that was definitely a key study takeaway. So our policy goals in looking at taxes were, you know, knowing that we're we're at a good level. With our tax rate, we think, and and given the uncertainty that's going on at the state and federal level, we think it's important to maintain a local cannabis rate. That's not overly burdensome, but still provides the city with stable tax revenue. We want to be flexible and able to respond to changes if needed. And we think it's important to assist core businesses so that they can stay operational once they become operational. We all know the first few years of a small business operations are the most tough. And it'd be a shame to help people get over that finish line of starting a business just to see them fail within the next year or two due to taxes. So the recommendations that came forth out of the committee around this area. Were to monitor tax-related legislation and the regional tax rates. And come back to the committee and the council as needed to make any changes as may be necessary. As far as positioning ourselves. The committee thought it was be a good idea to take steps that that may be necessary to make future tax changes to the tax rates as warranted. If there's a need to put things on the ballot, now is a good time to do that since we are on the election cycle. The three specific things that that the committee looked at in regards to taxes. Were tax relief or rebates for core businesses, different tax rates for different cannabis business types, so. Up to four percent, so that would be labs, for example, might get a one percent tax rate and distribution may get a three percent tax rate. And those are just examples. And then finally, consider graduated tax rate depending on the volume of business or the gross receipts. And this would be sort of a a way of small businesses getting some assistance and having less, you know, fewer taxes than than larger businesses. So I think it's important to note as we consider some of these positioning issues. That a change in tax rate will not be revenue neutral. I think we all know that. And I think it's important to note too that this is, you know. Cannabis taxes are kind of a specialized area. We are working with the city attorney on this to to make sure that we're able to do all these. And they're working very hard on that on that issue. So when we think about the priorities that we would like your council to consider. We think that tax items should be considered first, the business location issues second, and then the ownership changes third. The tax items we think should go first because of the deadlines associated with the need to put anything on the ballot, if that's what the council wishes to do. The business location, we think it's second because. Those recommendations will go to the Planning and Design Commission and planning staff, and they have their own timeline and their own. Process for for doing, looking at zoning and sensitive use issues. And then ownership changes, you know, will continue to work with. With our city attorneys to bring forward those ordinance. Consideration if that's what the council wishes to to move on. And then to try to, I know that was a lot of information, so to try to kind of really. Put this together for you around taxes, which is the first area. You know, I think we are looking for the council's vote on whether you want us to move forward with no positioning. If you want us to position to try to move on number one, number two, or number three. So number one would be the tax relief rebates if we're able to do that according to city attorney. For different rates for cannabis businesses. And if we want to consider graduated tax rates, these are things we, all three of them, we could. We could try to look at and go forward with if that's the will of the council. Or we could go for one of these or none of these. So that would be the first item that we would ask for your. Consideration on. The second item would be around those business locations. And again, this would be directing the Planning and Design Commission to review the current sensitive uses and business zoning. And look at those specific items. And so that's the second thing that we would ask the council's vote and input on. And finally, third, this is a two-part slide. For council action around ownership. And this is just those very specific ownership things specific to dispensaries. And that would be one, two, and three. Number four would be around all cannabis businesses. And number five is that ownership definition again for all cannabis businesses. And so that is the end of my presentation. Again, very dense. I apologize, but it's sort of a dense topic in a lot of ways. Happy to take questions and talk further.
All right. Thank you. It's very thorough and really important and but you've laid out the recommendations and categories, I think, in a way that the public can understand. So thank you.
Absolutely.
Let's hear from the public. Let's hear from the public, then we'll hear from members.
Thank you, Mayor. Our first speaker is Dean Dalben. Dean Dalben, if you'll unmute.
Yes, okay. Hello. Thank you very much. Yes, Dean Dalben, District Eight. I looked over the staff report. I'm very impressed with their findings. I I know that they have ten items that are their summaries shown on pages two and three. I see that Sacramento is shown as a net exporter, so I would like the city to. Enhance whatever revenues are received by adding a city surcharge for any product that is exported. That will increase the value of this industry as a significant driver of this economy in Sacramento, which is item number ten in that summary. I also noticed that they identified districts two and six with higher saturation for these businesses. My conclusion must be that they're receiving some unfair advantages. I don't know exactly what they are. And those advantages are denying equity to other districts. I think that needs to be corrected. Third thing, I don't see in the ten items listed on their summary, no negatives are mentioned whatsoever in these summarized standings of staff on pages two and three. Of this report. I think that indicates a need for us to dramatically expand what we have done in the past because it is working out so well. And we're negligent if we fail to do that. And one of my concerns in mentioning that is that we do, do we want any other cities in Sacramento? Or in the county to take a piece of our pie of these wonderful revenues? Lastly, I, well, second to last, I think we need to identify more revenues that are possible. I know when you buy lumber or paint or something that needs a recyclable container, there are extra fees and costs. I think we should explore that so we could add those extra costs on the revenue earned from this, so the city can benefit. Now, lastly, we must dramatically take action to protect this business from the underground producers and sales. Of this product that was mentioned in this report, and I think if we.
Thank you for your comments. Your time is complete. Will you make your final comment, please?
I just did. Thank you very much for taking this.
The next speaker is Mindy Galloway.
Hello. Hello, Mayor and City Council. Thank you so much for everybody for creating this report. And for giving us a chance to provide our input. I am an operator and an owner of a manufacturing distribution and soon to be storefront retail. I'm a social equity. Operator as well. I strongly support the staff recommendations, actually the ones that that align with state. And policies and regulations. As a small business, we have very limited amount of resources and have to spend. A lot of time on compliance and doing what we need to do in order to fulfill the needs of both the state and the city. So anything that we can do. Now, the city can do to make that of ease for operators is very helpful to the success of our business. In addition, you know, I'd strongly encourage your consideration for tax credits, lowering taxes. And providing credits to social equity and other businesses that support social equity. The objective of this program is to really help give an opportunity for people. I'm one of those people who have struggled a lot of my life and, you know, this is my chance in order to create this wealth, and if. My business is not successful in, you know, providing access to people. And having people go to legal cannabis instead of going to the unregulated market, we really need to lower taxes. And we need to help us smaller operators achieve the goal of the core program. And so I'd I'd really, I'd like you to consider lowering the taxes and really helping us. Have a sustainable, successful economy in the cannabis landscape as business owners. Thank you.
Next speaker is a phone number, four, three, six, six, Mr. Davis. Mr. Davis, if you're on mute.
Can you hear me now?
We can.
I'm commenting on this because I've studied this. And anytime I see studies of race and equity. I always wonder who's doing the test because they come back with the same results. There's a disadvantage. Now, one thing I didn't notice in the study after I studied this situation for months. Is they didn't talk about the really wealthy companies that are from out of state. I think it was one in Ohio. That was highlighted. I didn't see that in the study where a company can come in from another state. And really carve a major niche in another state like California. So I want to see that in the study, and from what I've seen and studied on this. This is a recipe for core to fail. Every time core gets in position to get any advantage. It the bar is raised higher. It's a barrier. It's, you can't. Do this with ownership, but yet if they bring in somebody, it they have to give up ownership. And as a business owner that's one hundred percent owned by one family, I reject that. Because that's just a a a a method. Of tricknology, which is an art of deception. So I want to hear how the core benefits from this study. Otherwise, these studies that you're doing. Race equity studies, two hundred and fifty thousand dollars. I've suggested this many times. Give the money to Core. Give the money to to the band back cheesecakes. Give it to other groups. Instead of wasting race equity studies by people that are probably not even of color. So I wish Core speaks on that because in the study, I didn't see anything about outside states buying up.
Thank you for your comments. Your time is complete. Will you make your final comment, please?
Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Kevin Hooks.
Hello, good evening. My name is Kevin Hooks, a social equity operator. As well as part of a shared facility project with all core businesses in D two. I encourage the council to take a stand on these issues of social equity and consider some of these immediate solutions to these problems. Come up with and redirect funds from the city cannabis revenues from the general fund to specific reinvestment. In the communities affected by the war on drugs. District five and two, for example, represents a huge population of lower income, if not of all of Sacramento. These neighborhood responsibility fees and a large chunk of funds from revenue need to be allocated to these communities. For issues and programs that we are constantly as a city trying to figure out ways to fund. Access to capital and access to real estate are and will forever be the biggest hurdles for our communities to get in any industry. There are ways to directly invest in social equity businesses to help them get going as well as sustain. I recommend using city vacant buildings to create storefronts as well as shared facilities. The study proves that the growth and how much exporting from Sacramento is dependent on the rest of the state. And it is crucial that as a city, we capitalize on this further. The state, the study also states cannabis is important to the city general fund. And a significant driver of our economy. We know all the positives, so anything supporting new business. Can only help Sacramento capitalize on the industry that is compared to the dot com era. The study also clearly states that getting social equity operators going is vital to the future of the righting of the wrongs of the war on drugs. Taking the next step by directly investing in cannabis businesses, specifically social equity operators. Will no doubt contribute to the growth of this industry in Sacramento. Councilmember Shenier, as well as Davina, mentioned threats against outside businesses and consolidation. And it's vital that you all protect small businesses by, you know, you know, and also the core community and our role in California as a whole. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Our next speaker is Maria Elena.
Yes, good evening. Um, yes, the report looks really good on the surface, and I understand the tax thing, but. I would say the with regards to the zoning, you guys need to focus on. And as you've heard, the last two callers state core. You did receive funding from the state of California, correct? Specifically for those disproportionately impacted communities to start these businesses, and a lot of them still. Have not been able to start their businesses regardless of what they have established for their businesses. And they're running up tabs on that. So, yes, reports are necessary. It's a new industry, and we need to know how to do the best business practices. But we don't do that at the expense of the people that we not only traumatize, but are now. Building and profiting off of as we've done for generations. So I I think it's great, your your report. I think, yeah, taxes because we need businesses, but really. You guys need to start serving some things up for the people that you're taking money for and that you're claiming to represent. Because this is just, it's been like three years now, hasn't it? And that's sad, and that's not good, and that's just bad business for everybody. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Our next speaker is Kimberly Cargill.
Good evening, council and staff. Can you hear me?
We can.
Okay, great. My name's Kimberly Cargill. I'm the CEO of a therapeutic alternative in Sacramento and a longtime cannabis industry advocate. I'm here tonight to support all staff recommendations that align with state regulations. The state has spent a significant amount of time, effort, expense, and public input and industry input. Into developing regulations that work. And I encourage the city to align with these regulations whenever possible. In order to reduce the time and money businesses spend on compliance, since we have to comply with the state also. It's burdensome and often confusing to have. Different regulations that contradict one each other, each other or conflict with each other. When it comes to taxes, I encourage you to think about long-term health, the long-term health of the industry. And encourage you to add a ballot measure that adds more flexibility for the council to make changes in the future. Encourage you to add tax benefits and rebates for core businesses and those that support core businesses. Thank you for all you do.
Thank you for your comments. Next speaker is Malachi Amen.
Greetings. Can you hear me?
We can.
Okay. Greetings. This is Malachi Amen. I'm Director of the Institute for More, which is a voice for the thousands of residents in Sacramento who were harmed by the city's. Racialized enforcement of cannabis. And, you know, unfortunately, and while it may be denied, there was a conscious decision. To not make communities harmed by the drug war a priority in the EPS study. And as a result. The council and the city is not making immediate and specific needs of core communities a high priority and the recommendations. That are emerging from the EPS study. We've heard a generous use of the word equity, and we most certainly appreciate the upcoming equity study. In fact, you know, excited about it. You know, however, the core communities also have immediate needs aside from those wealthy investors. Who will benefit from the expiration dates that have passed. that have passed, that will allow them to expand their marketed advantages. And with all of that said, we urge this council to shape three access to capital policies right now. So one, as a city considers its racial equity policies, reparations, and community reinvestment ballot measure with local cannabis tax revenues, we believe the time is overdue for direct investment in Core businesses and communities. And we're requesting that 25% of all cannabis tax revenue go for Core business grants. The state funding is not enough and we need all of the loans that have come out and undermined Core participants. We need those loans to be converted into grants. And then going forward from this point into the future, we urge this council to award all cannabis licenses exclusively to Core. The city made a policy commitment to achieve.
Thank you for your comments. Your time is complete. Will you make your final comment, please?
We need 50% of the licenses.
Thank you for your comments. Our next speaker is Barry Boyd.
Thank you, Mindy, and thank you, Davina, for your presentation. I do concur with several of the former speakers, or excuse me, prior speakers in regards to a reduction in the high burden tax structure that is currently in place. And that would be advantageous to those stakeholders in the cannabis industry here in the city of Sacramento. And to that, with reducing that high tax burden, there would be availability of saving or creating funds for capital, for additional investment in regards to specifically the Core program for what it was set up for those who have been challenged in the area of, of gaining or being able to gain capital in the current system. To that, if a community advisory board that would oversee a, could be created to oversee a community benefits fund that owners of cannabis businesses here in the city of Sacramento would fund by giving 1% of its gross revenues for distribution to nonprofits and to those seeking capital coming from a historically challenged background. Again, yes, it is a nether tax. But if, in fact, the high burden taxes that are already in place can be reduced, that 1%, again, in funding a community advisory board and community benefits fund would show evidence back in to the city here in Sacramento. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Our next speaker is Mike Snell.
Can you hear me?
We can.
All right, my comments are directed towards who's still going to be remaining on council come next year. We're going to need you to continue to be our allies as we're not sad to see some of the ones who are not allies make their exit. And with that being said, Core needs to be a priority. The struggle, the struggle to get these businesses open, the current existing operators, or I'm sorry, the, 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 the ones who, who've had these license for years already. It's to my understanding that government kind of swarmed around them and asked them, how should we go about regulating? They didn't have the barriers of entry that we have. And it's frustrating, even as a veteran, someone who's put his life on the line, multiple tours, and I'm still succumbing to stigmatism to a business and an industry that's already, that's already set specific, specific generations back so far already. So I'm asking the remaining members on council that will be back next year, next cycle, can we rely on you to put Core first, equity first? How are we going to keep, how are we going to catch up to the promise of 50% of balanced, a balanced industry for Core and the existing operators? If the barriers to entry keep getting higher and higher? We want to have our moment like our brothers in the lowrider industry. I'm sorry, the lowrider community. We want to have our moment like them when we can truly celebrate real initiatives, not just hollow promises. That's all I got to say.
Thank you for your comments. Next speaker is P.
Yes, um, you know, I didn't recall seeing anything in this plan regarding existing neighborhoods and communities that may or may not have been victimized on the war on drugs, of drugs. There are existing residents, all cultures, in various districts. And, you know, I don't understand why residential neighborhoods do not have some buffers to these business types. And zoning issues still exist in district two by the very nature of the historical landscape. And, you know, there has to be some consideration for that. That area has asked for caps for a very long time, not to stymie the opportunities of the industry, but to make sure that business amenities, other business amenities that are so desperately needed and other people have opportunities in other areas of businesses in those areas. Still, there are things that were promised when this industry first started that still in communities, existing communities that have not been addressed. And the monopoly of certain businesses owners in this industry having multiple locations should have been considered and can still be considered for the Core, Core recipients that need a place, not monopolizing in these other underserved communities. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Our next speaker is Maisha Bahati.
Hi, good evening, city councilman mayor. My name is Maisha Bahati. I am the CEO of Crystal Nuts. We are the first black and women-owned cannabis delivery and soon to be storefront dispensary on J Street. I'm calling in to support staff recommendations, particularly for tax reduction and rebates to help Core businesses sustain ourselves in this very competitive industry. Please help protect our small businesses. I definitely support more funding, grants. I have utilized the grants from the Core program. They have helped me hugely. So I think that is very important. Also, I would like to add that I do hope that the council will engage in a conversation for onsite consumption lounges. I know that hasn't been talked about, but that is something that I believe Sacramento would be a great recipient for, if you're allowed to buy cannabis. There needs to be places that will safely allow people to consume. And so I hope that Sacramento will consider that, considering that EPS study showed that cannabis is doing pretty good here. So that is my, my only comment. I just really hope that you guys will make Core a priority. Help us grow our businesses, help us, you know, expand in this industry that is really being taken over by big businesses faster than you know it. So, um, thank you so much.
Thank you for your comments. Our next speaker is D8 Neighborhood Vine.
Yes, Mindy, this is Daphne Harris in council. Thank you for allowing me to speak. A couple of things on the report, I appreciate the report. I would like to see recommendation five, having a quarterly reporting frequency and a revocation process and an auditing practice. We need to know how often you're going to be reviewing that information and the frequency. I also would like to see placement of locations having a percentage to business ratio. So if you have a cannabis business in a neighborhood, there needs to be a ratio to total business in a neighborhood, similar to the way you do affordable housing. There needs to be a percentage that's set so that one location is not overly saturated with cannabis over other types of businesses. The other thing I would like to see is the tracking of ownership and that being a public piece of information that we can see. Recently, there was a dispensary that was approved on Mac Road. The person that gave the presentation said that they had access to cannabis dispensaries in four different locations, but it was coming through a Core applicant. So I found that concerning as a resident. Also, the radius of public notice is less than 500 feet from the property line. That needs to be extended to two mile radiuses. So it does inform the residents that are impacted by businesses that are being oversaturated in their neighborhoods. And I would like to see the study on homeownership and loss of business being focused more on these reports, because I don't think that that has been done adequately. And I would like to provide additional information if you would like to have that. Thank you for my time and I appreciate it.
Thank you for your comments. Our next speaker is Deanna Garcia.
Hi, city council, city staff. Thank you for your time today. Hoping that the city will come to an alignment with the state regulations. Hoping that the city will move forward with aligning our city of Sacramento cannabis regulations with the state of California, making it easier for the businesses there to do business. And if we could please lower the tax in the city so that way we can be compatible with the other cities around us and the other counties. They're lowering their taxes dramatically, like weekly, bi-monthly. And I think it's time for the city of Sacramento to look at that, especially on like distribution, retail, cultivation, all the way across the board. Would also like for the city to approve shared facilities, especially in manufacturing, distribution. Those are really needed. And thank you for always stepping forward and doing the right thing for our city. Tonight, you guys have been champions. You guys have been doing great things and I appreciate that. I appreciate the hard work that you guys have to stand up there and do and, and the hard ridicule that comes with it. But tonight, you guys are working some wonders and I hope you can work some wonders for the cannabis industry also. Because we've been here supporting the city of Sacramento, the budget, the funds, the charities for a long time now. And it'd be nice to have some breaks from the city of Sacramento and, you know, let us know how you appreciate the money that's been coming in by helping us to lower the taxes and to allow shared facilities and regulating the city's regulations with the state regulations. Have a great night.
Thank you for your comments. Zion is the final speaker on this item.
Yeah, but if I could address the shared facilities very quickly, it's not allowed by state law. The committee was very much in favor of doing that. We want to ask lobbyists to do whatever they can at the state level to allow shared facilities. And when that state law changes, then we will, we will be there. Thank you. Go ahead.
Zion.
Yeah, hi, everyone. Thank you for having me. My name is Zion Tadessa. Some people call me Zion, Zion. Like everybody knows, I'm the owner of Kunshiba Restaurant, also the founder of Shashamani Holistic Natural Medicine. I'm going to be building on Flori Road and you guys are all invited. June 11th, from 11 to 4:00 PM, we will be groundbreaking and blessing ceremony. I'll be building, doing the groundbreaking for cultivation, manufacturing, distribution, school, educational center, and wellness and healing spaces on Flori Road. And I would really love for you to come to, to see somebody like me breaking history. So saying that, and thank you for your support too, because I wouldn't be here for, if it wasn't for everybody's, everybody's support. But adding to that, it's good to have the EPS study. Like everybody knows, I'm the first initiated person who's been fighting for the Core program. But our, our initiative was to get funds and resources. So I feel like we still have not got there, even though after four years, we're still struggling to get funds and resources. So just like you focused on the EPS study, I would love for you guys to focus on how we can actually get the funds and the resources for the Core participants. So we don't struggle. We're struggling now, even though you're giving us a little bit some money out there, which I haven't even received any money yet, by using my own money and also credit and all that. So we really need you to focus on getting us the fund and the resources so we can do the businesses, create businesses and jobs opportunity for our community and beyond. So thank you again. So hopefully we'll see.
Thank you for your comments. Your time is complete.
Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. May I have no more speakers?
Well, thank you very much for all the public weighing in. I see a council member, Valenzuela. Go ahead.
Thank you, mayor, and thank you, everybody, for weighing in. And thank you, Chair Shanir, for the process you led us through. And very big thank you to Davina and her team. I really liked, at many points during the committee hearings, Davina would ask the question, what's the problem we're trying to solve? Which I thought was just such a helpful way to frame, because I think cannabis has become a lot of things to a lot of people, a source of more revenue, a fear, a source of fear in terms of concern for economic development. But I think really taking the ideology out of it, looking at the data and EPS and really staying focused on what we're trying to solve led to a really robust set of recommendations tonight and really balance. Like, because we had some really concrete things we're doing in terms of aligning with the state, which makes a ton of sense. And I don't know why we weren't doing that second. Being a business owner and trying to define an owner in two different ways would be really stressful when you're trying to comply and follow the law. But also leaving some things open, like the zoning conversation and really deferring to our planning commissioners to have that conversation. Because that is an equity issue, as many have said, not just for Core, but for neighborhoods who are concerned with over-concentration. Because our zoning has really led to that concern. And I mean, if I'm a business, I don't want to be right next door to another business doing the exact same thing I'm doing. But we've created zoning that's created that potential scenario. And so I think this whole conversation and the proposals we've put forward, not that I'm speaking for myself, because I'm on the committee, but I think my colleagues on the committee, Mayor Tim Guerra, Councilmember Harris, I mean, we had a lot of discussion and a lot of people calling in tonight, calling into every single meeting. And I just want to thank you for that. And I also want to make sure the Core folks really do know that, that we hear you. We definitely hear you. And this focused conversation we're going to have, we're going to confront some of these questions again about what problems we're trying to solve, whether it's access to capital or the disproportionate impact of the war on drugs on, on people of color. You know, we are going to confront that. And anything we're talking about tonight, I don't consider anything off the table in that Core discussion. Like, if we feel like we need to make further changes to ownership or zoning, I think that all of this can still be an iterative process through that. And I'm really looking forward to having that conversation with you at the table and really excited to, to have that conversation come forward. I'm going to make a side request for the log and I'm going to kind of put this to the public that's listening, because we've had a little bit of conversation about cannabis lounges and you may have noticed that that's not a part of the recommendations tonight. By intention, that's a big conversation, a big topic. And I think we all want to make sure that the council is interested in talking about consumption, onsite consumption, before we send Davina on yet another task to design ordinance that will address that. So I'd actually like to put it on the log for us to talk about consumption lounges and really put this to the public who's watching this, who's interested in consumption lounges. To say, you've got two weeks until our next council meeting. You've got two weeks to contact these council members on this call and talk to them about consumption lounges to see if we can even have the conversation. Because there are a lot of pros I see in terms of giving people a safe place to, to experience cannabis, to, you know, getting all of these, getting out of the homes where there might be kids. There's a whole lot there. There's also a lot of cons. And so I just, I want us to have the discussion, but I also want to put it to the colleagues on whether they think that's a good use of, of staff time. And I really want to put it to the stakeholders. You've talked to me about what this means for your businesses and I think you need to talk to some of my colleagues so we can see if we can get this on the log on June 14th, which I think is our next meeting. So with all of that said, I would like to make the, the motion to move the committee recommendations forward with, but to send the question of the tax structure or the ballot measure back to law and ledge for further discussion. As Davina said, there's still a lot of moving pieces. I think we're going to hopefully know the answers to some of those pieces soon and, and have a better idea of what changes we might want to make on taxes and if there's a ballot measure in our future. But I really do think that we've done a good mix here of concrete recommendations and leaving open for further discussion, things like zoning, which is a really important, big discussion that needs more iterative practice with our planning commission, with the colleagues and within their districts. So I, that's my motion, mayor, to move the recommendations forward and to send the tax structure ballot measure questions back to law and ledge. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you. That's a good motion. Let's see if there's a second. Mayor Protem Geta?
Go ahead and second that motion, Mr. Mayor. And first of all, thank Davina for a lot of work and a lot of hours on a lot of critical questions. And particularly, I think, one of the things that in this motion is to send some of these items back to the Planning and Design Committee. is to send some of these items back to the Planning and Design Commission to have some serious conversations about, you know, land use, when, where, space, distance requirements, and making sure that we have that part of our citizen planning commission to be able to have those conversations with those communities. I think that gives us a bigger, deeper input. I think the Law &amp; Ledge Committee was a good start for us to break down a lot of that and break the data down. But I think, you know, just from our experience here, making sure that we go on a deeper dive when it comes to zoning distance and what uses are compatible where. That, I think, will, it'll yield, I think, positive results. The other thing, Davina, there were some questions in the public comment about, you know, impacts to communities. And those are concerns that I had myself specifically. And maybe you could talk a little bit about that. I know you skimmed through it a little bit, you know. But those were significant questions, at least for the power in area where there's a lot of this happening. And, you know, the pros and cons and the next steps. But can you talk a little bit about those points, Davina?
Yes, and David Zender from EPS is also on the call, and so he can definitely talk about the data that they looked at and that they collected. Their research focused on three primary areas in looking at sort of neighborhood effects. One of them were crime statistics that they obtained from the Sacramento Police Department. They also spoke with the Septet Officer that we work with and who basically goes out and inspects every single cannabis business before it's permitted. And so looking at the rates of burglaries and robberies involving cannabis businesses versus non-cannabis businesses, they found that it was statistically not impactful when it came to crime in neighborhoods. They weren't detractors of crime to a neighborhood. The second and third areas they really looked at, they did look at displacement issues. They found that back in 2018, there was some displacement that occurred during that sort of green rush as people were trying to get their applications in, but that those have pretty much evened out over time, and that displacement is not necessarily occurring due to cannabis businesses. There are issues around rising rents, just as I think many of our businesses are experiences as areas get sort of more gentrified and rents go up. Our cannabis businesses are feeling that, as well as our non-cannabis businesses. They looked at commercial real estate prices, and they found that the presence of a cannabis business did not negatively impact those commercial real estate values. And they did the same analysis for residential real estate sales. And again, looking at the city overall, as well as specifically at the sixth district and the second district, they noted some of the impacts of cost per square footage of residences sold within a quarter mile of a cannabis dispensary and a quarter mile of a cannabis production facility versus those within a quarter mile to a half mile.
Very good. Thank you. And I think one of the particular things that I want to make sure is where the market is going and what's going in the future. Particularly, you know, if the changes in state law and federal law affect cultivation, then the use of warehouse space becomes a question, because clearly there are better places in California where cultivation can occur. And if that's the direction, then one of the concerns that have been brought up, and I'm glad it's in the recommendations to direct the Planning and Design Commission to consider, is the issue about mixed light facilities. As you know, we're interested in growing our manufacturing, our industrial corridor. And so the limited space that we have, we want to make sure that that's available for those types of employment opportunities. We're encouraging Sacramento to be a manufacturing center as well for other types of manufacturing, not just cannabis, but everything else that we're moving, including, you know, our zero emission work that we're doing. But if mixed light facility construction continues to happen, quote-unquote, greenhouses, you know, and that takes up space for good manufacturing, and I think that's a problem, particularly if the industry moves into the Central Valley, and then we're left with facilities that are not compatible with the current uses. So I want to, again, I want to thank the, for looking at those issues. And the recommendations here, I think, put a big charge on the Planning and Design Commission to come back with those specificities. So with that, Mr. Mayor, I'll say that we, over the last number of years, we've tried to move steadily and then figure out when to put the brakes on with moratoriums, get the data, move again, put the brakes on, and then try to get that information. I think this is a prudent way to look at the, how we move, how we take these next steps. But I'm interested in seeing what our Planning and Design Commission comes back with on some of these concerns, questions and concerns. So thank you. And thanks again for Councilmember Shenier, for who, you know, again, you know, put a long process and a good path forward for us to at least just dive into so many different questions.
Thank you. Councilmember LaLele?
Well, first, let me thank Law &amp; Ledge. Just reading the notes from your meetings, I want to thank all the time that you dedicated to this. And also, Davina, thank you so much for that wonderful report and always being available to answer questions and concerns. I do have a few questions regarding some of the findings through Law &amp; Ledge. One, what would the benefit of sending the zoning issues within districts, having that going to Plan and Commission Committee? What was the thought process behind Law &amp; Ledge on how fast? Was Law &amp; Ledge thinking that this is gonna be a faster process for that commission to create zoning for our city? I'm just trying to figure out what was the reasoning behind that recommendation versus Law &amp; Ledge creating a blueprint, or at least come to council and let the council members have a say-so on this blueprint?
I can certainly start in on that. I do know that, you know, my colleagues from planning are here and can address this probably more specifically about their process. But the Planning and Design Commission and the Planning Department, they are the holders of the zoning codes and the zoning process. And so it's not that your council will not get a chance to weigh in on that. The Planning and Design Commission will conduct their research. They'll work with staff. They'll do the outreach they need to do. They'll come back, and then they will present a recommendation to your council if it's appropriate. And then your council at that time will be able to vote on it. But I don't know, Greg or Tom, if you want to address this further about the process for zoning changes?
And Davina, I can appreciate that, and thank you so much for that explanation. But once again, I think it just adds more time to something that can happen in a very short period of time. So that's one of the questions that I have. As far as ownership, when we say on the survey or a recommendation, I read that if you're a part of establishment, whether you're the president, VP, general manager, they have to be also named as part of the ownership. Did I read that correctly?
So what the ownership definitions say is that if you're a corporate officer, you would be named if you are a holder of any stock, if you own any part of that company. Corporate officers, a CEO, a COO, you know, a lot of times they're hired to do specific jobs, and they may not have any ownership at all in the business. More frequently, what we see is that there is usually a stock ownership offerage as part of the employment contract and as a bonus. And so if they do have any ownership, then they would be considered owners. If they're just straight employees, they would not be considered owners.
So is it safe to say that as long as you own stocks directly, then you're considered owners?
If you have an ownership of the company in whatever form.
Whatever. Okay, great. Thank you. So coming back to the, going back to the lounge concept. You know, my office has been receiving a lot of calls about that. And, you know, this definitely is something that I'm hoping that Law &amp; Ledge will really consider to bring it back, because there are some of these facilities that walked into it, thinking that by now, the lounge issue would be resolved. And obviously, it's not, and it's costing these individuals, which some of core members actually, tremendous amount of money. So hopefully, we can get some answers on that as well. Going back to the core applicants, I understand that we're waiting for another study to be done and another survey to come in. Davina, the money that we got from state, which was about $5 million for the whole cannabis industry, there was a portion of that that was set for, you know, supporting the core program. How much was that amount?
So we got two different grants this year. One was our grant that's only for core members, and that can only be given directly to core members in either a grant, an interest loan, or no-interest loan form. And that was, I want to say, $4.7 million. And then we got another grant from the state. It's a one-time funding for a special project to help them transition their provisional licensed cannabis businesses to annual licenses, and that is able to assist everyone who is in that situation.
So do you think that some of this money, I mean, just a suggestion, you know, I don't think grants are the way to go. And I've talked to many core members. If we can create some kind of a loan that not only helps them with the licensing fees, but also construction and initial inventory, and then we can partner up with one of the local banks, whether it's five-star or one of the banks that are locally, that they can create this financing package for core individuals where they get the money to build out, get the inventory, and then they receive the loan with the first payment to be made six months after opening, 30 years amortized, three-year balloon payment or five-year balloon payment, at whatever prime is minus one. And the reason I'm suggesting something like this, so we will have this money that will continuously come to the same bucket that can be utilized for business, that the core-owned businesses. So the goal would be that they don't have to go and find investors and give away 49% of their ownership. So I hope that Law &amp; Ledge will consider that, because the money is here, and some of these core members literally are ready to go to the next level. They just don't have the funding, and I hate to wait till December for another audit or consulting company to come and tell us how to do this. And my next?
Oh, excuse me. We do have a loan program, a revolving loan program that is for core members. It was funded with an initial $4.3 million grant from the state. That money has all been dispersed, and we are now doing loans based upon the income that comes in. It's a 0% loan with a six-year term, similar to what the Small Business Administration offers as far as the term. And so we have found people get as low as $25,000, and other people will get, I think, you know, up to $200,000 for their projects. So we think that that is one tool that can be helpful if people are at the place in their business where it's appropriate for them to be. We have also heard, and I think you heard from the public testimony tonight, that there are some people who are opposed to that and would prefer that they be grants. You know, one thing that we've certainly heard from some loan applicants is that they prefer loans, because given the federal prohibitions on banking, a lot of times they have to get these checks in their own name. And so if you're getting a loan in your own name, that's taxable income that you have to report. I'm sorry, if you get it in a grant, it's taxable income you have to report. But if it's a loan, then it's not taxed, and so they prefer it for those reasons.
So I can tell you in the meetings that I've had with the core applicants in the last probably three weeks, when you explain the loan factor to them, it's fully understood, because this is business. I mean, and I explained this to them, and I tried to be very straightforward. If you're getting in the world of business, there are certain steps that you have to take, and that's getting financed. So, you know, and if we can create a financing that this money will continuously come to the same bucket, and it can be utilized for the same group of people that were affected in the 80s during the war against drugs, it's a good thing, and I hope that the Law &amp; Ledge will consider that, that grants, that's money that will go and never come back. Loans with very low interest or, you know, some kind of interest. You make the owners to have more of a skin in the game, and they don't owe their business to anybody, because it was a loan. And also, that money comes back, so the next core applicants can take advantage of that money. And I was kind of hoping that, you know, that would have been one of the topics that we would have hit immediately, because, you know, it's great that we've changed some policies and we'll make sure that all of our admin policies matches the state. But we do have some licenses or applicants out there that are just kind of waiting to see what the next step is. So if we can consider that, that would be great. And the idea of a CUP that's linked to land, that's another topic that I think, I hope that it's on top of the list for Law &amp; Ledge. A CUP to a landowner to be attached to land, that's just making that land the property owner to create more value for their property. And I think every, any property owner should have, should create value to their property based on the amount of rent and tenants that they have, not based on a CUP that they have. So that's another thing that I hope that discussion can be kind of opened up in Law &amp; Ledge and sooner than later. So some of these individuals that are waiting, they can have an answer. So, you know, I know this was the very first meeting, and it seems like it took care of some of the administration issues. But I'm hoping that the next meetings will get to the root of how we can get this industry moving forward. And we do a lot of talking about equity and core. You know, it comes to policies, and it's our say-so. I'm hoping that we can create some policies immediately, so it would benefit the core group. Again, I'm not about handouts. I'm about handoffs. But then it will create excitement that there is actually a vision. And Davina, how many CUP licenses do we have out there that, and if you don't have it, don't worry. If you don't have the number, don't worry about it, that BOP is not attached to it yet?
Don't have the exact number. You know, I want to say there's, I don't know, I probably shouldn't even conjecture. I'm guessing it's probably like 20 or 30, but, you know, I think some of those are people actively working towards completing that CUP or getting a modification. And other people are just sort of not planning to do anything with that. Property owners have no plans.
Yeah, and that's another thing, right? That's another thing that the CUP is kind of concerning, because as a property owner, you get it, and then you decide, well, I don't want to do anything more. I'm just gonna sell my property for a much higher value, because now I have a CUP. And I hope that Law &amp; Ledge can look at that and take away the land-based license and connect it to the business. Have the business have value. Have the business bring value to the property owners and not the other way around. And as far as the crime statistics, I think it's also fair to say that, you know, some of the crimes that are taking place within that industry are simply not reported, because they don't want to have the issue that this business is actually adding to crime. But there are breakings. There are thefts. But unfortunately, some of them are not reported. Last item that I want to again bring to Law &amp; Ledge, and that's security. So whether you have a dispensary, cultivation, what's the guideline on security? Do they have, you know, I'm assuming every cannabis business, except maybe the delivery ones, should have security. And the distance from any cannabis business to house, schools, parks, I'm hoping that that gets discussed, and that gets changed to 1,000 feet versus the 600, which in the District 2, you might as well have it much lower, because it just doesn't make sense. I don't know when the next meetings for Law &amp; Ledge are, but I'm hoping that... I don't know when the next meetings for Law &amp; Ledge are, but I'm hoping that um some of these top-heavy issues will also be uh will be on top of the list uh versus the, the administration issues. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember. Councilmember Harris?
Yeah, thanks, Mayor. Uh when I got elected, I did not conceive that I would be spending uh so many hours talking about cannabis as, as I have. You know, as a nascent industry, we took a decision early on to control our own fate by adopting policies and issues to move forward so that we weren't controlled by the state decisions. And now it seems that we're moving much closer to aligning with the state as we move forward. I find that somewhat ironic, but the fact of the matter is, we've worked pretty hard on this issue. And as Councilmember Chenier pointed out, we've done some things very well and some perhaps less well, but uh overall, I would say that the decisions we've made and the progress we've made has been pretty good. I, I support these recommendations. You know, we, we put a lot of hours into discussing all of these things and Councilmember Laloie, all those issues that you asked, that we discussed at Law &amp; Ledge, we actually did do that already. Uh there was tremendous amount of discussion there. Maybe a couple of things you mentioned weren't uh completely fleshed out, but we certainly tackled those subjects. Uh so I'm in support of the motion and I, I also thank Davina and Sarah and Laney, our new fire chief. And uh you know, the people have worked very hard on this, especially Councilmember Chenier, who has really put a, a depth of thought into this that is pretty extraordinary, was the driving force behind getting the EPS study done, which was a great thing because we needed some data to work with to make more intelligent decisions. We flew by the seat of our pants for quite a long time. Again, you know, we made some good decisions and some uh, some perhaps questionable ones, but with this data and with the discussion driven by Davina and her staff, I think we're arriving at some, a pretty good pathway forward. So I'm in favor of the motion there.
Thank you very much. I, I just want to again thank the staff and thank uh the Law &amp; Ledge Committee. You know what strikes me about these recommendations is that we are maintaining um we're setting a direction to maintaining enough flexibility to be able to respond to circumstances beyond our control like uh new state regulation or federal regulation. The idea of being able to vary uh the tax rates depending upon where we find ourselves in the uh competitive market, I think is very, very sound. To try to find some middle ground between over-concentration in terms of ownership, but also recognizing the uh, the fact of the market and that um this is becoming a larger business. And then finally, um the equity study is really, really important because our work will not be finished here until we do address all of the issues raised by um the, the core experience so far. And it's difficult as this has, as, as this industry is becoming more corporate, um we have got to make sure that we are regulating properly so that the end result is that our core, uh our, our core applicant are true participants in uh the emerging markets. Um and, and, and that's going to require some, some tough choices in a way that, you know, some critics might say, well, we're hindering the overall market. Well, we have to find a balance. And what we put forward, uh what you put forward today, um I think i- is a signal that we are serious about a good business environment. And then at the same time, we're gonna have to grapple and, and embrace uh the core concepts here, even if that means uh some additional regulations. So this work isn't done, but I think we're sending the right signals here and maintaining the right kinds of flexibilities uh as the, the world changes and as uh the cannabis world changes. So thank you to everybody. Um very, very good work.
Mayor, one, one more quick thing if I can. And, and, and I appreciate this. One of the notes that Davina had at the end was, you know, creating uh a different tax structure where each sector could be taxed up to four percent, so they might not all be the same. Could certainly reduce our revenues. Um we, we decided not to go for a tax increase because we think that would be a really difficult thing. However, the, the flip side of that is we need to stay competitive. We have a pretty good uh thought that the county will get into this business. I think they've got, got up to three votes now to do it. Um we don't want to be in a race to the bottom, but we also want to be able to retain that flexibility. So while we may lose some specific dollars by lowering some of those tax rates, um I think it's really important to note that uh keeping the industry overall healthy and watching it grow um could certainly make up for any dollars that we might lose in that way. And if we don't do that, um we could see falling revenues with any tax rate that we have. So with that, um I want to really, I, I thank my committee for all the accolades. This was certainly a group effort. And uh again, want to thank Davina and, and her crew. Really great work. Um a lot more to, to do on this and uh I'm happy to call the question.
Thank you. Let's call the roll, please.
Mr. Mayor, this is Providing Direction to Staff. Would you like a roll call on the motion?
Yes, please.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Vice Mayor Ashby?
I'm sorry, Mayor.
Well, i- is, is a motion, i- is a motion necessary?
It, it is not.
No.
Okay, then Jay, is that all right with you?
Well, what, I, I would ask our legal counsel, what does that do? We have a set of recommendations. The motion was to move the recommendations forward uh with direction to send the tax structure back to Law &amp; Ledge to come back to council. Do we need a, a motion to do that or is Providing Direction make all of these things happen?
Um, well, Councilmember, I think uh the best option is to take the vote, but yes, of course, they can, staff can proceed with the direction given by council.
Yeah, I would rather take a vote just so if we have to come back to it, we know what it was. If that's all right.
I mean, it is a general, it is a general, not every, you're not necessarily voting for every recommendation, but it's the direction to come back with, right?
Which, which, which recommendations are we not voting for?
Uh no, I understand. I'm just, I'm trying to
Yeah.
get consensus here, that's all.
I just didn't hear anybody oppose it, so I don't know why we, but it's fine if you want to take a motion.
You want to, you, you want to take the vote, Jay?
I, I would like to.
Okay.
We've, we've done a lot of work.
Okay, and call the roll.
Thank you. Vice Mayor Ashby?
Sure, yes.
Councilmember Laloie?
Yes.
Councilmember Harris?
Aye.
Councilmember Valenzuela?
Yes.
Councilmember Chenier?
Aye.
Mayor Protem Gata?
Aye.
Councilmember Jennings?
Yes.
Councilmember Vang?
Great job, Councilmember Chenier and Law &amp; Ledge. Uh looking forward to a lot of the work that we still have ahead, especially supporting our core members. And with that, I will vote yes.
And Mayor Steinberg?
Yes. All right, that was easy. Not really. Great work. Okay, a lot more to go. All right, members, that concludes the agenda. Are there council ideas and questions? Hope we can keep it short, please. Long night. Councilman Laloie?
Just a quick announcement, um Higginwood Community Center, uh this Tuesday, June seventh, there's a, a, a community mural, uh paint day. So I want to encourage um everyone within the, within our district to stop by. We can actually get engaged um in, in painting and helping with these murals. You can be of any age, any kind of uh experience that you have. Uh it's Tuesday, uh June seventh from three to six P M. Um I also want to give a, a major, major congratulations to the uh Grant High School graduating class of twenty-twenty-two. Um very proud, wishing nothing but the best. Uh you have the whole world uh in front of you uh and um and I know you're gonna do uh the best that you can, uh you can do. Just remember um you're in a, in a country that provides opportunities. Uh take it and don't let anybody um uh stop you. So once again, mega congratulations uh to Grant High School graduates for uh twenty-twenty-two. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Councilmember Harris?
Thanks, Mayor. Uh a couple of announcements. I am going to uh sponsor a community meeting about Joshua's House. Uh that meeting will take place tomorrow, Wednesday at six P M. And you can gather the uh Zoom address on my city council website. It's only two and a half weeks away from our first Pops in the Park concert. I expect all of my colleagues to show up. At least I hope so. Uh this is a great way to come out of the oppression of the pandemic and we've got a really big band and a very strong band to kick it off, Big Crush, at McKinley Park. That is uh June eighteenth. Last is a request of the city manager. You know, we had a long discussion about governance and about accelerations and deferral areas, and we have taken no action since. At most of my community meetings, people have been querying, what's going to happen? Who's going to govern these deferral areas? It's a big question and it needs to be resolved. So, Mr. City Manager, I would ask that next week you give us a timeline to deal with this. And also I brought up the question about a charter cleanup because I believe our city charter does not uh comply with state laws regards redistricting boundaries and how they're implemented. So please bring back something to show our constituents that we're moving forward on this very important issue. Thank you, Mayor.
Councilmember Harris, I'll work with the uh city clerk and city attorney as well.
Yes, thanks very much.
Yeah.
City Manager and I have been talking about this, uh obviously, especially with the deferrals because um I, I will be the only council member, elected official representing, official representing those areas. So yeah, it's timely. I'm glad you raised that. Thank you. Vice Mayor Ashby?
Thanks, Mayor. Just a couple of things. Uh first of all, this Friday, uh in District One, we'll kick off, and this is so fun because we haven't done this in two years because of COVID, our first Friday event, so concerts and food trucks and happens in the North Natomas Regional Park. You are all welcome to join us. Starts at six o'clock. We'll have a band out there. And also this week, Councilmember Valenzuela, we're gonna have the Low Rider Commission out there with us. They're gonna bring out some vehicles and we'll have some fun. So if any of you guys want to come out and, and see what they have going on, that'd be fun. We kicked off the farmer's market last week, but it's now every Saturday in the uh North Natomas Regional Park under our farmer's market structure from eight until noon. And then last one, Mayor, I know that you will join me in this, but a week from today is pretty special and important day. So want to remind and encourage people to get out there and vote. And I just want to wish all the candidates involved in all the races across our region best of luck. I know everyone put a lot of time and energy and effort uh into their campaigns and it's um a big deal to finally reach this moment. So congratulations to everyone who's worked so hard to help friends, colleagues and whatever. And uh please, please go vote, participate in that process because you are the ones that make it work. We need every vote.
Absolutely. Vote, vote, vote. Thank you. Uh Protem Gata?
Thank you very much, uh Mr. Mayor. Uh this Saturday, oh, this Friday, sorry. This Friday morning, it's the final Sacramento Valley Manufacturing Association and Charles A. Jones Manufacturing Job Fair and Site Tour uh here in District Six on Stockton and Lemon Hill. We've been hosting um these uh regional manufacturing training center job fairs uh at nine A M. to noon. Come out to Charles A. Jones, Stockton Boulevard in Lemon Hill. This is our training center. It's a great opportunity to get in touch with local manufacturers here. People, uh many in Sacra- in the city of Sacramento that are hiring and training for high-wage jobs in manufacturing. So not only get to tour the center, but also meet the instructors and then uh also talk to many of our employers that are looking to hire folks in manufacturing. It's a great adult school program and a great way to get people engaged in, in manufacturing. Then uh also this Saturday, uh at uh, at uh, we're going to be having uh from Civic Thread uh on Twenty-first Avenue, we're going to be having a walk audit of Twenty-first Avenue. We were able to get a C D D G federal HUD grant for planning on Twenty-first Avenue, a fifteen-mile acre area of what used to be the old rail line there. And we're doing a walk audit with the community to talk through about the space, what do we see the future of the space, what are the good pros and cons of the current space um and how to re-envision that green space there. Um and so with that, I encourage everyone to come out. Thank you again uh to uh uh all of the uh folks who participated today and it's a long night. And thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Councilmember Jennings?
Thank you, Mayor. This will be brief, but uh Councilmember Chenier and myself, uh we're gonna do a co-trucks and such with music and movie night this Friday, starting at five o'clock at the Bell Coolidge Park, right on the corner of um of uh Fruit Ridge and Land Park. And we're just gonna have a wonderful time bringing friends and neighbors out to get to know each other. We've got three to four trucks, food trucks that'll be out there, lots of music. And for the kids and families, we got a movie night. So come on out and have a great time, get to know your neighbors and uh enjoy the food.
Thank you, sir. That sounds great. Uh Jeff, again?
Yeah, sorry, Mayor. Second bite at the apple here very briefly. I just wanted to congratulate the Veterans Affiliated Council for a really wonderful Memorial Day e- event. It was hap- actually happened on Saturday, but um you know, we're just coming off of Memorial Day and I, I wanted to congratulate all our veterans and especially express my appreciation for all those who died to guarantee our right to vote in free and unfettered elections. And it's never been more important than now. Thank you, Mayor.
That's for sure. Thank you. Let's hear the public testimony and items that are on the agenda. How many do we have, Mindy?
Thank you, Mayor. I have four hands raised so far and I do have a read to the record, some board and commission appointments to the Natomas-
Why don't you do that first? Go, go.
Thank you. To the Natomas Basin Conservancy, um Steve Kohn and Chandra Sekir Kilmori. To the Utilities Rate Advisory Commission, Megan Fidel and Melissa Lee. To the Sacramento Housing and Redevelopment Commission, Stephanie Duncan, Samuel Starks and Andres Guamos. Thank you. Our first, our first speaker is Dean Dalben.
Uh thank you. Uh Dean Dalben, District Eight. I want to thank the mayor for identifying that he still has some connections with the state, with the governor, with the state legislature. I sort of broached the idea of seeing if maybe the state would be willing to pilot something in Sacramento by giving the grant money that seems to be in tens of millions of dollars to the state to explore if the city will be able to put people in low-income housing into houses that the city buys. Evidently, the uh median price of housing in Sacramento, although high, a little over five-hundred-thousand dollars, still could get a lot of people in housing. And we may use that money to see if the state will give us a little variance and flexibility to see if we can help people get that entry house. Usually there are three-bedroom, two-bath houses. Something to explore, have the staff explore the possibility, see what your influence can get you. I think we'd all appreciate it. Lastly, again, I'd like to reinforce the idea that I've already mentioned, vote. Be sure people are aware that they can sign and date their return ballot envelope and just mail it back in the postage-paid envelope, no stamp needed. It's very important. And remind people that if they do have someone put the ballot in a Dropbox, that person's name and signature and relationship must be on the ballot. But again, to make it easier for people, there's no need to use a Dropbox. It's safe and secure to mail it back to the county using those procedures. It goes directly to the county register voters handled, lead, handled by the same United States Postal Service that brought that ballot safely and securely to you. So happy voting, everybody.
Thank you for your comments. Our next speaker is phone number four-three-six-six.
Yes, this is Lambert. I, I would like to end on a, a, a lot of shouts out within two minutes. First of all, I want to thank the mayor for confirming that the city council meetings are going to return back to the chambers. I believe that Sacramento City uh Hall is the only one that hasn't returned. I know the county's back. So uh shout out to Mayor Steinberg for that. I also wanted to send out a shout to Grant High School for graduating. Even though I didn't see any acknowledgement to the young folks who won that championship at Golden One, Del Paso Heights, we're very proud of you. at Golden One Del Paso Heights, we're very proud of you. We told you that when we saw you win it. As far as the grant line, uh I heard something very positive over the weekend. Mayor, I saw you, I saw someone from your office on one of the local channels, one of the millennials kept me in the loop. And it showed where someone from your office gave a check to the Drum Line. And I was so proud of that because I saw the Drum Line Director, uh he likes cheesecakes too. Like I said, cheesecakes appeals to all races and both sexes. And I asked him, I said, okay, after Mr. Laloie, Vice Mayor uh Ashby, and now the mayor is on record, are you ready to go? He 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 confirmed to me that he has not heard from the city manager's office. That's where the money is. Cut the check loose.
I I I I cut a check to the, it was from me, uh Lambert, uh to-
Well, I know, I know, but what I'm saying is, thank you to you, but I want some money to come from the city manager's office because they have Yipsey. They have all of this money there that they talk about uh for the youth. Cut it loose because I found out over the weekend, they're not just going to Washington, D.C., they're going to New York.
Thank you for your comments. Your time is complete.
I'm just gonna say, because I I gotta stick up for the city manager for uh the the city manager and the city council are directing tens of millions of additional dollars.
Wait a minute now, I didn't get to finish.
That's all. Thank you. Thank you, Lambert. Next.
Our next speaker is Barry Boyd.
Excuse me, um recompose myself. Uh thank you. As was stated a uh a couple of times this evening, um in this evening city council meeting, that there was the use of multiple meetings um by different committees and uh and those sub- excuse me, and those additional meetings were held by subcommittees such as ad hoc committees to vet out what would be needed to arrive at an agreeable recommendation to be brought to the full board and or commission that the public would be noticed and invited to participate in, to be discussed. And those recommendations that would be forwarded forwarded onto the city council to discuss in a public forum to either uh be implemented, denied, or tabled uh for further uh discussion. With that, I request that the recommendation made by P and P E committee to the city council to remove the ability of boards and commissions to form ad hoc committees not be added to the city code. And that code recommendation is two-point-four-zero-point-one-six-zero. So again, the fine work that has been done and would be done by ad hoc committees um from the different city of Sacramento boards and commissions, I ask again that the ability to form ad hoc commissions uh committees, excuse me, remain in place because a, uh what is the term? Um a subcommittee, I can't think of the name, uh that is a committee that would only allow both the chair and the vice chair of boards and commissions to discuss less than the authoritative ability of a full ad hoc-
Thank you for your comments. Your time is complete. Will you make your final comment, please?
I was done.
Thank you. Next speaker is D eight Neighborhood Vine.
Again, thank you, Mindy. This is Daphne Harris. Uh city council, it's been a long meeting. Thank you guys for for holding out on us. I'd like to see um public notice being done according to the Brown Act and according to Bentley King, where you actually are posting it via your e-blast as you do other community or neighborhood information. It's clear that the s- the scope of notification is limited. Um and it needs to be expanded so that the public actually has an opportunity to engage. So one of the key ones I wanted to bring up was with um design and planning, when they were doing a cannabis dispensary located on McRiv, the radius of notification was five hundred feet from the perimeter of the border boundary line. I think that's very limited. It did not uh give notification to the residents that are nearby. It's adjacent to a senior housing community, which I know that we're protecting children, but I think we also need to just protect our seniors. Um I'm just concerned about the way we're doing things in a limited scope. It needs to be expanded and public notice needs to be done uh where it's open to the community and whether you have to post it on the website or something of that nature, it needs to be more expanded than what it is today. So I'm looking for that to happen within the council on all commissions, all boards. And if you can identify who the secretary of all the commissions are, that needs to be posted somewhere on the website. The pro- processes and procedures referred to a office which no one in the city council was able to disclose to me. Ultimately, I was told that the city council uh city clerk is actually the commission secretary on some of the commissions and that concerned me. So I was just looking for some direction on having that information be more public and on the website and open to the community. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Next speaker is Zion.
Uh hi, so this is Zion again. Uh so what I was gonna say is that uh California just made a hundred billion dollar surplus. So what we asking is not even ten percent of it, maybe one percent of it to go to our black businesses, black and brown businesses. So the city can lobby uh for us and by uh uh we have the uh uh policy writer and lobbyists. So why not get us the money from the money that we just made a hundred billion dollar? And we have to uh, we shouldn't be getting a loan. Why should we be getting a loan? When we have a hundred billion dollar surplus in California and we asking probably zero-point-zero-one percent, actually should be in fact, spending more money into the black businesses that has been already uh been uh uh disadvantaged. So and our black businesses pay taxes to the California, so we need to have just even just from the general fund, at least twenty-five percent of it going to our black businesses. So we can build our community from grounds up. If we don't do that and then the city doesn't fight for us, who's gonna fight for us then? And then you guys gonna give us a loan and then we're gonna get in credit and then we're gonna get in debt and then go back to again and then everybody, all the big companies are gonna come and take over us. That's gonna end. That's how we, you, the city people, the city council people, all of you, need to fight for us to get that money from that a hundred billion dollar uh uh California mint. So we're not asking too much. We are actively asking very little for what we have to cover for our community every day today. We need to create jobs. We need to create business opportunity for our community. So you guys have to support us regardless.
Thank you for your comments. Your time is complete. Will you make your final comment, please?
You need to be there for us too in-
Thank you for your comments. Our final speaker tonight is Mike Snell. Mike Snell?
Yes, I just want to pick, can you hear me?
We can.
So just piggybacking off what Zion was saying, um i- it's whatever we can have done. Um it's the the loans, we've already, we've had tons of meetings about this already uh last year. I think it's actually a year to this day. Um and I don't know why we're having some rhetoric come back up on uh issuing issuing loans. We've already discussed over and over that that doesn't work. Uh a six-figure debt for equity business is not substantial. Like, I don't, I don't understand the thought process on that. Um and going forward, I mean, the 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 votes on these recommendations um that it really should have been given direction to Davina so she can engage with us since we really don't have a form of council on our side as allies. So um the that we're we're kind of moving fast. And again, how are we making court and priority? What's the acronym stand for? Cannabis Opportunity Reinvestment and Equity. How are we ensuring that? It's all my comments, sorry.
Thank you for your comments. Mayor, I have no more speakers.
All right. Thank you very much, everyone. It was a long night, um but uh a very important set of public debates. Thank you to the public. Thank you to staff. Thank you to the members. We are adjourned.